The last time, next time will be in person.
I am so excited. That'll be so wonderful. Well, it is seven o'clock. It looks like we do have a quorum. At this time, we will convene the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two City Council Successor Agency, BIFA Agenda, for the city of Brentwood. And could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. If you could join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will open public comments. I'm turning to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda, items listed under Presentations, informational reports, or on the Consent Calendar, Request for Future Agenda Items, new request. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting when you'll have the opportunity to provide them. I received no written public comments that were submitted prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the City Council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. I do have two hands raised. I'll go ahead and share the timer. And my bar is over there. Okay. I'll call on Danny Dorman, followed by Cenziana Todor. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Two thousand and three, I had the privilege of moving out here to Brentwood. And over the subsequent sixteen years or so, I guess I was just that typical resident who voted, but just pick names and things that just caught my attention. Then in two thousand and nineteen, Measure L. That's what got me, for good or for ill, that's what got me into this thing called Brentwood Politics. I remember what started me on that road was a councilperson who was very, very forthcoming, honest, and really put her mark on keeping the city the best way it could. So that's what got my attention. In two thousand and twenty, I had a chance to talk to her as she was running for mayor. I believe I got to speak with her twice, and she really epitomized for me what Brentwood can do. And so since then, and I've had positive, I've had negatives, but they've always, in my mind, always been far more positive. And I truly, truly, truly am going to miss Councilperson Rary. She put her stamp on governance here for many, many years. And from what I understand, even before she entered the arena, she has done everything she can possibly do for our city. And I wanted to put that out there, put that out there on the record. So Karen, thank you very much for your service. And I think I stuck to the script, so you owe me five dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cenziana Todor, followed by Rod. Cenziana, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Margaret, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Sorry, Mr. Bryant, I will not go away as you didn't want me to be on the council after the election season. And I encourage this council to really look at the ethics policy that our city has in place, because our mayor might be next in line to be investigated based on that. So laughing is not really an option at this point, so it gives it away. Anyway, at the last council meeting, I heard the Amber Lane apartment is not, it's not built to the design specifications approved by the council. I brought this issue up during public comments in July twelfth this year, and nobody from the city got back to me, as Margaret always mentions that if there is an issue, a staff member will contact me. Something is wrong with how these projects are handled by the city staff, and it creates even more distrust when this type of issues surface. And I am very disappointed that tonight we don't have a meeting, an agenda item specifically saying, this is what's been approved, this is what's been built, and have a clear image after this meeting, and further delaying, you know, the status of this particular project. I would like also, as a second item, to express my opposition to Sunrise Village Project. This project does not align with our general plan. Also, it is against City of Brentwood's inclusionary affordable housing philosophy that integrates families with lower segments of income to live in a regular neighborhood and not marginalize and isolate them in what this historical whole project. The way the project is presented will displace very low-income residents who cannot afford to pay the rates presented in the initial application. Not sure the other candidates for district took the time to talk to those residents, but I did. And their stories are heartbreaking. They also, the existing stores between Sunrise Drive and Gregory Drive, who are long mainstains in the area, will be displaced. Gina's Tattoo Shop, Antique Co-op, Pocket Change Car Sales. It is your duty as City Council members to protect our residents and businesses and make sure they can safely stay in their current location. Your vote for or against this project will reflect how much you care and you're willing to fight for existing Brentwood residents and the businesses serving this community. Another item I want to bring up is the car racing on Sand Creek that got worse by the minute in the last few months.
The speaker's time had expired. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. The first thing I'd like to say tonight is just thank you to all of you for putting Measure Q on the ballot, as we've seen it passed with a comfortable sixty-four percent margin. Once again, demonstrating that the people at Brentwood, by and large, are not very happy about all the excess development going on and at least want to protect things whenever they can. I want to thank the city staff led by City Manager Tim Ogden and Assistant City Manager Darren Gale and the legal team for putting together a ballot initiative that's strong, probably stronger than what was originally proposed. I want to especially thank Councilmembers Meyer and Mendoza for putting this forward for us. And thank you all for helping us protect our parks and golf courses, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I did have a bone to pick with the website. I went to send you guys all an email today, and there's no place on the website where I can find your email addresses for your government accounts. I just find a form, and the form has a two-thousand-character limit, which was actually too short to put the thing that I wanted to put the email in. And that's pretty ironic, because it's a, basically, it's a three-minute, possibly not much longer speech. And it just, it seems kind of like, almost like the city doesn't want to hear from us. They won't even let us put in text that might run longer than three minutes. It seems like these accounts, these government accounts should be openly available for anybody to send an email to. And there's really no reason I can think of not to put those out there. They're not your personal emails. And it's not exposing you to any kind of privacy issue, because you're public officials and these are your public accounts. And finally, the Consent Calendar item B two states that teleconferencing meetings will continue from November fifteen through December fifteen. And I was just wondering if we can get some clarification. I know there's people out there that want to know, when are we going to have a live meeting in the chambers? Is it going to be on December twenty-seventh? Or will it be the meeting after that? The Brentwood Buzz Newsletter just put out does indicate the AV renovations should be complete by December one. So the chambers should be ready, and frankly, in planning a time for the December thirteen meeting. And I would really have loved to have been there for that meeting. Can we get some clarification on when City Council will return to chambers? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. Nice to see everyone. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we can still do the Zoom thing for the City Council meetings. I have a lot of things to do tonight. The agenda looks really, really hefty. Nine hundred pages was a lot to wade through. And I want to keep attending the meetings this way, and I want to make sure that people do, too. Second, I want to also thank Karen Rary. I have been in awe of her encyclopedic memory of details that just blow my mind, but I'm so glad she had that for us, because she asked such good questions, and that's something I'm truly going to miss. That attention to minuscule detail that makes these projects, when they get built and they get built according to plan, is the reason why Brentwood looks as nice as it does, and that's why so many people are moving here, is because council holds builders accountable. I agree with Cenziana Todor about Sunrise Village. I've been saying all along, the best way to do, to execute affordable housing is within projects, which I know the builders loathe to do, because, you know, who cares from their point? It's not profitable from their point. They seem to not understand the constraints that we're under from the state. I just know from living in areas that were considered poor, trying to get people to come over to play when I first moved to this country, and their parents were like, oh, we're not, we're not, we're not allowing our children to come to play to your house because of where you live. And when you're a child, you do not understand, like, I have toys, you have toys, I don't understand why you can't come over and play with my toys. And yeah, that's what I had for today. Thank you. We will speak again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brayden Heina. Brayden, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Good evening, Council and Mayor Bryant. I want to start off once again congratulating the Councilwoman-elect Pat Nisha Pearson and the Councilman-elect Tony Orlemans on their election victories. I've stated before, all over my social media, that Brentwood is definitely in good hands. I, you know, the course of campaign trail, meeting all the candidates, Tony's a great guy. He's going to ensure that our city is safe and prosperous. And Pat Nisha, with her brilliant ideas, her understanding and knowledge for the law and for government, is going to ensure transparency and that council members follow the rules and nothing fishy goes on. A huge thanks, huge thanks to Vice Mayor Rodriguez for his years of service and dedication to the city of Brentwood. I guarantee you, you will be Miss Grayly, and hopefully, there's another opportunity for the future for you to sit on our council. And another thank you to Councilwoman Karen Rary as well for her due diligence and countless years of service, committing herself to the city of Brentwood. It's just, she deserves, both of them really deserve a round of applause. We really, we, the residents of Brentwood, really appreciate you both. And, you know, on Election Day, obviously, it was a mixed bag of emotions. I didn't win my election. I conceded. One of the callers is clearly a little booty tickled, angry. But this is, you know, this is just the beginning for me. I guarantee you haven't seen the last of me. But when you think about it, I really, the city of Brentwood won, won this election. I was for Measure Q, it was kind of confusing for me, because I was misinformed about it, but it passed, and I'm glad that parks will be protected and all that. That's great. But the city did not elect an alliance member, and that really is amazing. That's all I could have asked for. California Proposition One passed, which I think is just so sad, enshrined the murdering and killing of children, little babies up until birth into the Constitution of the state, and that breaks my heart as a Christian. There were a lot of victories across the country that I'm happy about, and oddly enough, whether, I don't know where anybody stands, but it's really weird that Donald Trump announces candidacy. It's going to be really interesting and dirty and nasty. We'll see how that goes. I'm very excited about what's to come with that. And another thing, I had a resident on my campaign trail who brought up a certain issue to my attention. She said she was very concerned for cars circulating on Broderick and Ellen Lane, where she lives, that they, there's drivers that frequently drive by way too fast, doing donuts in the lot there, and wishes that the city could install a speed bump or some kind of signs to keep drivers from following the speed limit, keeping the city safe. That's just one of the concerns that was brought up to me. Over the course of the next months, I'm going to lay out all the things that people have told me since I didn't win the election. But that's all I have for tonight. And as for that investigation, to Mayor Ryan, that's BS.
Thank you. Have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. Before we go into information reports, would it be possible for staff to address some of the questions regarding our live meeting that will be coming up and also comment on the availability for the Zoom call as well? That would be greatly appreciated.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have made great progress on the Council Chambers project. We expect it to be done by the end of November, so we are planning to broadcast our first meeting, both hybrids, so both in-person on December thirteenth, seven PM. That'll be in-person to anybody who wants to attend, and then we will also continue to maintain the Zoom call option. We're working through some of the protocols now about how to conduct public comment, for example, and probably looking, okay, everybody in-person first, and then everybody on Zoom. And then if there's anybody back in the chambers, we'll go to them and then back to Zoom, so trying to figure out some nice order to that. But we're not mandating masks or anything. We will try to maintain a little bit of social distancing in the chambers and just trying to work through some of those protocols now. And the AB three sixty-one is a state requirement that in order for you to even meet via Zoom tonight, we have to pass that every month. There's a new law that's now changed that, that it'll be good for a whole year going forward. So it still provides those options until they change more of the law to keep these options open for everyone. Were there any other questions I can briefly answer? Or those main ones?
Can I mention something really quickly, if that's okay, Mayor?
Please.
Just wanted to ask him to clarify, when you're talking about the Zoom option still being available, if council needs it, can you be a little bit more clear? We will not be meeting via Zoom and be a council in chambers. We'll all be in person.
Council will be in the chambers. There are some new laws that dictate when you can also participate via Zoom if the rest of the council is in the chambers. And those are quite detailed and still being worked through and understanding how those operate. But there are some emergency situations where you can continue to participate via Zoom while the rest of the council is in the chambers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Meyer, for the question. At this time, we will move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And we will begin with Councilmember Mendoza.
Hey, since the last time we met, I have attended a Cali meeting where, again, we're going over all of the laws that are passing and what we can do at the state level. And we did see two measures defeated in San Francisco for increased zoning, so there is appetite out there for residents of, you know, San Francisco is usually the most progressive when it comes to that. So if they turn down additional housing and it looks good for the rest of the state, but still looking to get the measure on the ballot for November of two thousand and twenty-four, hopefully start collecting signatures in the spring. So if you want local control, you can call me, reach out to me, and you can help me get some local control for our cities.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. I attended the American Legion Veterans Day Tribute at Veterans Park. Also attended the California Alliance of Local Electeds meeting. I had an annual league leaders briefing. This is, in my role as the President of Mayors and Council Members Department for the state. It was a review of what was accomplished in two thousand and twenty-two and the issue dominate the legislature in two thousand and twenty-three, priority issues for Cal City's members. And I want to mention, too, and this is also going up to any incoming council members who are listening. I'm representing all of us here when I attend these meetings, and if there's something you want me to bring forward, I ask that you just let me know how you'd like me to word that, how you'd like that presented. But I wanted to give, and I mentioned to Tim, I was going to do this, just a brief overview of the pending priorities for two thousand and twenty-three, because there's a meeting in November in Monterey. I'm not able to go to it, but that's where hello, dog. That's where these priorities for two thousand and twenty-three will be finalized. But in the meantime, it was really interesting to see how the changes in priorities were shifting. And so I wanted to mention, one of the things that was really interesting is that the affordable housing priorities listed by all the cities in the state who took part in the survey stayed stable, but the market rate priority reduced by ninety percent. Like, people are seeing it that much less of a priority, which I thought was really interesting. There is a lot on, let's see, existing. I'm going to just quickly name the top ten. I think these are really interesting for people. Number one, protect and modernize existing city revenue streams. Number two, maintain and approve bridges and roads. Number three, identify new revenue streams. Number four, attract new business and jobs. Number five, and this is where this one stays pretty similar, address homelessness and increase access to wraparound services. Number six, address financial sustainability. Seven, cultivate a strong local workforce. Eight, increase recruitment and retention of law enforcement. Nine, increase availability of affordable housing. And ten, improve employee retention and recruitment. So really interesting priorities. Those will become more public as they get finalized. Again, this was the first initial overview of what these priorities were. And then I wanted to mention two other things. I met with our Public Works Director, Miki Saboda, because there had been a couple of people that reached out about the Chromium Six issue. One of them was a resident who's very involved in the environmental field and said that he thought there was a lot of attention to this, and it was kind of blown out of proportion. And then the other one was a little bit concerned, because she's seeing rumors about this, you know, being really dangerous for Brentwood residents. I'm going to address this a little bit more later. But I also wanted to ask if we could get, after the informational's are done, if we could get an update from Tim about where we are with Corn Fest, because that's another thing. There's a lot of, a lot of things flying around, a lot of comments on social media, a lot of back and forth about what level of, you know, things are planned, if they're tentative, if their permits are submitted, all of that kind of thing. So I was hoping Tim could give an official update about where exactly we are, what's been established, what's still pending, if there is anything pending, and then all the rest of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rary.
Yes, I do not have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
I think that is the first time you've ever had that. Of course, it's only been a week since our last one. Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah, I don't have anything either. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, since the last time we met, I also attended the Veterans Day Memorial Service Event at the Veterans Day Park. Do want to thank all of our local veterans, the VFW, as well as everyone that was involved in that. There was a really nice turnout there. And, you know, the things that we enjoy in this country, the liberties, the freedom, much of that is because of the sacrifice of our veterans, and they just, in my opinion, they don't get enough appreciation and credit for everything that they've done. And it was a really great event for those that were able to attend. Also, I attended the Transplan Bart State Route Four and the Equrafa Meeting. And that is all that I have to report at this time. We'll now move into the Consent Calendars.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I?
I'm sorry. Yes, please, please respond.
Thank you. So there is some interest in some stakeholders in the community to bring back Corn Fest that obviously hasn't occurred in maybe a dozen years. And there are some concerns as well being worked through by some of the stakeholders. Several nonprofits have been contacted, the Downtown Business Coalition, the Chamber of Commerce, for example. And staff have received a reservation for the community center. I believe it's the second first weekend of July. But we have not received a special events application yet, and we will be carefully looking at that, making sure that staff have the resources to accommodate whatever gets submitted. So whether that's two days, three days, one day, those things are not yet defined fully. And what their request is and how it may impact staff's capacity with also having our July Fourth Parade and everything that's occurring just a few days earlier. So we may recommend an alternate date. We may recommend a shorter season, especially in trying to restore this back to the we may recommend an alternate date. We may recommend a shorter season, especially in trying to restore this back to the community. There are some eighty-plus downtown closures a year with the farmers market, makers market, and all of the events, which makes our downtown a very exciting place to be. And we're very excited for how the businesses generally are thriving with all these events downtown. But we do want to make sure this this event coming back doesn't have any real negative consequences that can't be fully mitigated. So once we have an application, we'll give it very careful scrutiny and expect that probably the end of the year or first of next year.
And and can I ask Tim if people would like to keep up to date with with any developments that are occurring? Is there a place that they can go?
Uh, Greg Robinson with the press is spearheading most of this effort. I think you can contact him directly since the city is not directly involved at this point. And I just wanted to also clarify. So December thirteenth is the date that we anticipate having the council certify the election and saying goodbye to our two faithful members leaving and then welcoming the two new ones. And we will also, that will be our only meeting in December per our municipal code and the cancellation of the December twentieth meeting. So it will be our only meeting in December. So just wanted to make sure the public was apprised apprised of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, then.
I'm sorry.
Want a chromium six update to Susanna or no?
Um, I, after getting another resident inquiry, I was gonna make that a new agenda item instead. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move into consent calendars. Um, I'm asking to pull item B one. Uh, is there a motion or a further request on the items?
I'll make a motion to adopt consent calendar minus item B one.
Yeah, but first.
Second.
Uh, second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Right.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, um, move to item B one. Uh, this is something that uh, because of previous conversations with all the council members, I know uh, that our full council is in support of uh, our local businesses uh, and have financially through the last couple of years uh, spent many hours of help and 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 partnering with some of the community nonprofits as well to to make sure our our local business families as well as the businesses themselves are uh, helped and and valued as much as we can. So I am very excited to present this proclamation uh, today. Uh, whereas the city of Brentwood celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas on Small Business Saturday, the Downtown Brentwood Coalition is planning the Winter Wine Walk and Tasting Tour, where locals and visitors will explore the shops and stops of downtown while discovering locally made wine. And whereas the Downtown Brentwood Coalition regularly hosts events downtown in support of the businesses, community and the community as a whole. And whereas the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce supports our local businesses and communities through annual events like La Gran Fiesta, Hometown Halloween, and Christmas Parade, to name a few, that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations, including the Downtown Brentwood Co- Coalition, the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce across the country have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas the city of Brentwood urges all residents to shop local and shop small this holiday season to support our local businesses, which provide much-needed job opportunities for local residents and sales tax revenue that supports the community, including providing funding for public safety. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby proclaim November twenty-six, twenty twenty-two as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of Brentwood to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year dated this fifteenth of November, twenty twenty-two. And with that, I will move approval of item B one.
I'll second that.
Have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Right.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
At this time, we will move into public hearings. Uh, item C one is a mitigated negative declaration for the Sand Creek Road Extension. And Assistant Director of Public Works, Jack D- Jack Dalwall, and Engineering Manager, Jigar Shah, will present this item. Uh, Jack.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, let me share my screen real quick. Can you all see my screen as well?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the Councilmember. My name is Jigar Shah, and I'm City's CIP Engineering Manager. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the SEQA adoption of City's one of the strategic initiative project called Sand Creek Road Extension. The extension of the Sand Creek Road will comply with the circulation element of the city's general plan. It will also provide an alternative path of travel to the city's proposed Innovation Center. Additionally, this project will provide an access to Kaiser Hospital after the remaining of the roadway improvements are completed in the city of Antioch. Thus, this project will provide very critical infrastructure to the citizens of Brentwood. The Sand Creek Road Extension will connect to the westerly end of the existing Sand Creek Road near the State Route Highway Four interchange. And it will connect to the newly built intersection at Hydon Ranch Road and Sand Creek Road. It will travel through this city acquired right away. It will also go through this undeveloped area and crossing Sand Creek. The proposed scope of the current project will include constructing two-lane roadway, a bike lane on each direction, underground utilities, and a bridge across Sand Creek. The ultimate build-out improvements will construct additional two lanes for this four-lane arterial. And it will construct curb gutter and sidewalk and landscaping. The ultimate build-out improvements, though, will be constructed by the adjacent development in the future. City staff and its environmental consultant prepared this initial study mitigated nega- negative declaration ISM D for the ultimate improvements of the project, including the current project. City then published this ISM D for public review and comments for a thirty-day period. During that, during that public review process, city received comments only from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, CDFW. Our environmental consultants went through these comments, prepared response to these comments, and developed mitigation measure or monitoring and a reporting plan, MMRP, for the project. During that process, our environmental consultant noticed two key comments that needed to be addressed. First, city shall comply with the county's Habitat Conservation Plan, HCP. And second, city shall obtain stream bed alteration permits from CDFW, Fish and Wildlife, as well as State Water Resource Control Board. City will comply with this two key comments. Once once the council adopts uh, this N R M L documentation, city staff will move forward applying for these permits. City staff has also included the final ISM D, MMRP, ARA, and response to these uh, CDFW comments in this agenda package tonight. Finally, I would add that the city uh, recommends, city staff recommends adopting this N R M L documents uh, for this very critical strategic initiative project called Sand Creek Road Extension. With that, if you have any questions, then our staff as well as the N R M L consultant will be happy to address. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Jigar. Um, is there any, uh, are there any clarifying questions of staff from council regarding this item? Uh, seeing none, do we have a motion on this item?
Then we have to go to public comments.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
And discussion.
Yes, yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the public hearing and open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret. Thanks.
Okay, and I, if I could ask Jigar to stop sharing his screen?
Sure.
Thank you. I receive no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm currently seeing no hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, then we will close public comments, and I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
First and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay. Uh, thank you, staff, for all of your work uh, on that item. I'm looking forward to uh, the future where our residents can much more quickly get to uh, emergency help that they might need at Kaiser as well uh, through that project. At this time, we'll go to item C two. Uh, the adoption of state building and related codes.
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
You're just so excited about this item. You just want to get it going.
I wish. Thank you. I'm gonna slow down all the exciting news here. Um, is there any council discussion regarding this? Uh, yes, Councilmember Meyer.
Uh, I think the mayor has someplace to be tonight.
You know, it's just uh, everything that's been going on is kind of thrown thrown me off.
It's okay. It's, we got this. Um, thank you, staff, for um, for the presentation tonight and for the report. I I kind of got a little geeked out on it by reading all of the interesting details about the um, the cultural artifacts and the environmental impacts. And and it was just really, I thought it was a very interesting report. Um, I wanted to mention a couple of things. The first one is, this is a prime example of why it's so critical for us to keep regional planning in mind. Um, we have got to be very strong in our relationships with our neighboring cities. We are working towards common goals when it comes towards things like traffic and infrastructure and and through ways between our city and their hospital, for example. And I I think this is just a really good example of why that is super important. Um, I, let's see. I'm looking at all of my notes. I took a lot of notes because, like I said, I kind of geeked out a little bit. Um, I think I'm going to forego any other comments because my biggest thing was really about the the regional planning. Um, and again, thank you so much for so much detail and uh, making this, you know, a small enough chunk that it was easy to listen to tonight and and get a real sense of what this is going to bring to us. And um, it's gonna do a lot of wonderful things for the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rary.
You know, this is exciting news. We i- i- it's been a long time coming. I I I, lots of councils have said, we've got to get, you know, Sand Creek built all the way through to Kaiser. So it'll be three quarters of the way to Kaiser. Um, and I think there's a temporary fix until the real one can go through. Um, but so this is, this is exciting, not just for trying to get out to Kaiser, but also um, for for getting to the Innovation Center. I mean, this, this will give that ability for people to access the Innovation Center from two different directions, um, from Lone Tree as well as from Sand Creek. And um, I'm, I'm just thrilled that we're able to do this um, at this time. I am I'm glad that um, the uh, E- E- Equifa uh, was able to prioritize it for us. And um, i- it, it can't come soon enough. So and and thank you to to staff for all your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
Yeah, I also echo the thanks because this is a long time coming. As a resident, we've been waiting um, for a long time. And just really quick, I know everyone's going to be happy that they don't have to get on the bypass, get off on Lone Tree, and then get stuck at that intersection on Lone Tree going into In-N-Out. So that's um, now you're able to go down Sand Creek and then up Pear Doran Ranch. So hopefully that will ease a lot of the traffic because I know we hear about that and Antioch hears about that. So um, this will be very helpful to get some of those cars off of the Lone Tree um, right turn and a left turn into that shopping center. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, I also just like to thank the staff for all the hard work, um, great presentation. Uh, once again, you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Now, at this time, do we have a motion on this item?
I I will make a motion as detailed in the staff report and resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the Sand Creek Road Extension. And I'll second that.
You have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
Now, moving into item C two, uh, the adoption of state building and related codes by reference. And Alexis Morris and Chief Building Official Ken Murphy will present on this item. Alexis.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll take this presentation tonight, make it brief. Um, this is important, not as exciting as Sand Creek Road, but this is our every three-year update of the building code with all of our exceptions. And so it's very important in how we um, implement that code and enforce it in the city. Uh, the first reading of this was held on October twenty-fifth on consent. Um, the state law requires the public hearing on the second reading of these type of ordinances. So that's what we're here for tonight is to hear any public hearing and uh, move forward with the adoption of the uh, twenty twenty-three building code. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions of staff regarding this item at this time? Councilmember Mendoza?
Um, I think, is this an urgency ordinance or just a regular ordinance? It's just a regular ordinance?
Yeah, um, state law for these types of ordinances just has the second, the public hearing on the second reading, but it's a regular ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'll need to, I am opening the public hearing and we will open public comments.
At this, oh, I receive no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm seeing no hands raised.
Okay, at this time, uh, we will close public comments. Uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
First and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
I.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous?
Is there any further discussion regarding this item? Uh, if not, do we have a motion for this item?
Um, I'll make a motion, but just after saying that, I think all building codes and zoning and land use is exciting, Alexis. So it's, you know, it is exciting.
But anyway, um, motion, so as detailed in the staff report, wait the second reading and adopt the ordinance, adopting the California Building and Related Codes by Reference.
We have a first?
Second.
Second roll call vote, please.
I'll read the title of the ordinance first, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood amending Title fifteen Buildings and Construction, Chapter fifteen point zero four of the Brentwood Municipal Code to Adopt by Reference the Twenty Twenty-two Edition of the California Code of Regulations Title twenty-four California Building Standards Code with Amendments, the California Administrative Code Part One, Count, the California Code, Building Code Part Two, Volumes One and Two, the California Residential Code Part Two Point Five, the California Electrical Code Part Three, the California Mechanical Code Part Four, the California Plumbing Code Part Five, the California Energy Code Part Six, the California Historical Building Code Part Eight, the California Existing Building Code Part Ten, the California Green Building Standards Code Part Eleven, the California Reference Standards Code Part Twelve, and amend Brentwood Municipal Code Chapter fifteen oh six to adopt by reference the Twenty Twenty-two Edition of the California Building Code Standards Building Standards Code Part Nine, the California Fire Code as amended by the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-four, including findings supporting amendments to the Twenty Twenty-two Edition of the California Building Standards Code Part Nine, the California Fire Code. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Great job reading all of that uh information, Margaret. Thank you. Um, this time we'll go to item C three. Uh, it's an urgency ordinance extending for one year, the urgency ordinance related to State Senate Bill Number Nine. And Alexis Morris will present on the item, Alexis.
Thank you. Can everyone see me and hear me? My video just had a glitch. Sorry about that. Um, so thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is to extend by one year our urgency ordinance for SB nine. This is an urgency ordinance in front of you tonight. And our planning manager, Eric Noltemius, has a brief presentation for you. Thank you.
Yes, I'm gonna stick on that track of uh keeping as brief as possible. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. So just as you may recall, SB nine was signed into law last September by Governor Newsom. Uh, it's a complicated law, not surprisingly, uh, but its primary purpose is to minimize restrictions and limitations of traditional single-family zoning on housing development. As what it does essentially results in increased housing density in single-family residential zones. So the council uh first considered an urgency ordinance to address SB nine last December. It was put in place for a forty-five day period. The council then extended the ordinance for an additional ten months and fifteen days at its January twenty-fifth meeting. The urgency ordinance is set to expire on December fourteenth. And staff needs more time to put the permanent ordinance together. So it's recommended at this point that the council extend it for a second time and for an additional one-year period to December fourteenth of next year. It's anticipated that the permanent ordinance will be ready for the public hearing process because it does need to be considered by both the Planning Commission and Council uh at some point either late summer or early fall of next year. Uh, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions and I'll turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I have a question. There's um, I think a perception out there that urgency ordinances are kind of like a bad word. Um, they think that we cost our taxpayers money. Can we explain why it's an urgency ordinance and not just a regular ordinance?
You can take that one, Alexis. Yeah.
Sorry.
So each, each urgency ordinance is different. They all have different contexts. So this particular urgency ordinance um was made urgent by the fact that the legislature adopted this law at the end of twenty twenty-one um to be effective January first, twenty twenty-two. And in order for a city to read, understand the law and it have its own implementing ordinance and go through a first and second reading is not possible in that timeline by January first. So the last couple legislative sessions have put this, put cities in a position to not have time to adopt ordinances through the regular process in order to have them be effective by those January first effective dates of those laws. So this one in particular um was important, the council felt it was important to have its own implementing ordinance. So we adopted it as an urgency ordinance to make sure it was an effect January first.
Okay, and actually, a lot of cities have urgency ordinances because
Correct.
they want to ensure that everything was okay when it was built. So
Yes, many did on the subject for sure.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Are there any further clarifying questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'll now open the public hearing. I'll turn it to you, Margaret, opening public comments.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm seeing no hands raised.
At this time, we will close public comments. Um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, councilmember Rary?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second that.
First and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Uh, councilmember Rary?
Um, yeah, I just have a comment on this. So we're in the process of putting our house on the market. And yesterday I signed the disclosures and in there, there's a governmental section. And so for those realtors that are out there watching this at this time, um, I think it's the very first question that comes up asks about zoning. Um, and if there's any changes that would affect your, the zoning in your neighborhood or your parcel or whatever, and and so SB nine is one of those that is still kind of unknown. Um, but it is something that needs to be added in the disclosure because your next-door neighbor could turn around and and split their lot and and do this. So um I just, I wanted to bring it it to the attention of any realtors out there that this is something you probably need to be adding into your disclosures because it's a statewide thing now. Um, and and it's, it's just fact, unfortunately. Um, but who are we to know what we should be doing with land use in our own city?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the the state, the state lawmakers, they they know better about what what zoning needs to take place within our city limits. So it it's very frustrating and um anyway, that that's all I wanted to say.
You know, just to piggyback on that, I think that um it's important to bring your disclosures because it will impact your property values, right? So what we do with our ordinances is try to mitigate that as much as possible to make sure that the product you're getting, if someone decides to add an ADU or split a lot is the best product. I mean, we're seeing people in like Berkeley put ADUs in their front yards and complete disregard to the aesthetics and to what happens to their neighbor and um you know, there was an article about it, you know, the other day impacting, you know, a neighbor put in an ADU in the front and it totally brought down the property values to the neighbor on the other side because they can't look down the street anymore. So we've tried to put in measures so that if this does happen, they look as best as possible and the setbacks exist and they'll match the main house, but um there's some things we can't control, you know, like um Karen, what Councilmember Rary was saying. So it's important to know that all of these bills are going to have impacts on your property values. And if I could jump in too, I was gonna say, um, one of the things the the public needs to understand too is this, this process is taking a while. It's not coming back to us for a while. We've got a lot of other huge projects that are um occurring. But one of the things that staff is doing based on council direction, we did some outreach to a s- like statewide city uh listserv to get information from a lot of other cities about what they are doing to mitigate some of these impacts and what design reviews they're putting into place um to to do exactly what Councilmember Mendoza mentioned in keeping the quality of our product as high as we can. So staff has been um diligently working on that and that will come forward when we, when we see this presentation next year.
I I agree with everything that has been said. It is, it's, it's more and more frustrating that um the local control is being, uh, it used to be uh chipped away uh regularly at the state level. Now, uh, it's it's almost a wholesale move on a significant portion of the proposed lit- uh laws and and recommendations from the state level. Uh, and and so, you know, again, I I appreciate the work that our council is doing as well as our staff. And it's really important for our community to stay involved and vocal at a state level as well. Uh, w- we may not be able to stop some of this, but we can hopefully be allowed enough voice as a community to slow it down as much as possible and keep local control as much as possible. Um, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Oh, as detailed in the staff report, adopt the ordinance extending the SB nine urgency ordinance.
Have a first?
Second.
Second. I just keep getting beat out.
I waited a second.
First and a second, uh, roll call vote, please.
I'll read the title of the ordinance first. An urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood extending for an additional period of one year, an urgency ordinance amending section sixteen point zero two zero point zero six zero seventeen point one zero zero point zero zero five, seventeen point six two zero point zero zero seven and seventeen point eight two zero 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 three of the Brentwood Municipal Code and adding chapters sixteen point one six nine, seventeen point seven nine six and seventeen point seven nine seven to the Brentwood Municipal Code. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, this time we'll move into business items. Item D one pertains to an agreement for landscape design architectural services for the Sand Creek Sports Complex, and Bruce Mulder and Aaron Wondon will present the staff report. Bruce?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, we have a theme this, this evening um on Sand Creek and uh long-term projects that we are bringing uh to you this evening. So um, I'm very excited to be bringing this item before you regarding moving forward with the contract with Verde Design for the planning, design and construction document services for the development of our Sand Creek Sports Complex. So as you all know, this was identified as a top priority um in our strategic initiative to move forward with the planning and construction of Sand Creek Park. So tonight's item is to award this contract. And once this contract is in place, the consultant will work with staff, the community, the Parks and Recreation Commission to complete the process of planning and the design of Sand Creek Park and ultimately get this to construction. So to summarize the background on this item, a request for qualification was issued back in September for the planning, design and preparation of the construction documents. In a total of twenty-three firms requested the RFQ. Then on October eleventh, two firms submitted statements of qualifications. And each of these firms were interviewed by Parks and Recreation and Engineering Staff. And Verde Design was unanimous unanimously chosen as the firm to move forward with. So Verde Design specializes in sports park planning and development of both natural turf and artificial turf sports fields. And they have a proven track record of design and construction of reputable sports complexes. Some of these include the Roseville Soccer Complex, Legacy Sports Complex in Tracy, the Morgan Hill Sports Complex and World Cup Training Facility, and the Crocker Amazon Athletic Fields in San Francisco. Uh, and one recently that's local is they've worked with Liberty Union High School District on sport field renovations at both Liberty and Heritage High Schools. Um, they have emphasized that they understand the operational approaches to balancing local recreational needs and league play with tournament-level facilities. And they'll work with Brentwood on determining the optimal operational model and design customized customized to our Brentwood needs. Services as part of this contract will include uh preliminary design services, which includes community outreach. Design development uh at sixty-five percent construction documents, ninety-five percent construction documents, and finally a hundred percent construction documents, followed by bidding services that get us to construction. In addition, other optional services have been identified and recommended to be included in the project. With approval of this contract this evening, Verde Design is ready to begin work right away. The tentative schedule has planning and design taking place in twenty twenty-three with construction of the park breaking ground in twenty twenty-four. So this concludes my presentation and uh myself, I think Aaron Wondon, and we do have representatives of Verde Design also available if there are questions for them, and that includes Derek McKee and Daniel Colossos with Verde Design. Thank you. Ready for any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Hi, thank you so much for this. I've been waiting twenty years, so I'm very excited. But um when it comes to the community um involvement, I know there's a couple of designs in the packet, but those are from twen- two thousand two, two thousand seven. So the the final product isn't necessarily going to look like what's in the packet, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So uh what was put in the RFQ is basically the preliminary designs that we have had um in the past to help define the project. But we will take those and work with Verde Design um and do additional community outreach to basically customize and refine that this project for Brentwood for now and the future. Um, and I know that the emphasis has been on sports fields uh and multi-use fields and artificial turf on the city property with additional fields in the basin. So that vision will be brought forward and we will basically work with the community to refine what that is to make sure we have the right design for Brentwood.
And then I know we have an ad hoc committee, right, that's that's assigned to this. What, at what point do they step in and get involved versus like just all over community involvement? Like, what does that look like?
Uh, well, we'll work with the Parks and Recreation Commission and uh Tim may, may have to clarify. I don't know, we had an ad hoc committee for the youth center, but I don't know that we had one identified for specifically for the Sand Creek Park Project.
For some reason, I thought we were going to form one for this. But maybe I was wrong.
I don't recall us having set one up. We are going to be visiting with the council in January to establish committee assignments. And if there's desire to create a an ad hoc committee, that can certainly be done at that time.
Let's watch the park and rec because I thought Blythe and Pelts were on it. I thought they
So we do have different ad hoc committees for our Park and Recreation Commission that include different projects. So it could very well be that we have an ad hoc with our Park and Rec Commission because for example, we have an ad hoc for pickleball and some of our other projects. Um, so yes, it very well could be an ad hoc that we work with a Park and Rec Commission. Um, normally we work with two and then we bring it to the full commission um to get information.
Okay, and what is that like? When do they step in? Do we know, like, at what point? Is it when, you said you get sixty-five percent back. Do you talk to the ad hoc before you you get to sixty-five or do you wait till you get sixty-five and then present it to the ad hoc before it comes to Park and Rec?
Uh, we'll be defining that process, but basically uh one of the first things we'll do is sit down with Verde Design and go over um the project schedule. Um, and one of the first things that we do is go through the community outreach process. And um in working with them, one of the things that they um recommend is they come up with three different options based on the the vision, and then they present that to the community. Um, with that, then we will take that to the Park and Rec Commission as well. Um, but the ad hoc is is normally involved very early on in the process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Rary?
Um, now, you you said the emphasis would be on artificial turf. Now, you, you said the emphasis would be on artificial turf on the city portion, but depending on what the community output or input is on it. So are you saying that what we had said during our strategic initiative session that we wanted artificial turf on that land can be changed by public input?
Well, basically.
Or, or park and rec input?
The, the idea for artificial turf is a vision that we have to maximize play. Artificial turf works really well when you can have lights and you can have a, a lot of different types of activity on one field. We think that's the best vision for the city portion of the park. However, I think it makes sense to have our expertise designers come in and validate that and validate that with the community. There's a lot of different considerations that go into natural turf versus artificial turf. And I think it's important that we have that conversation with our consultant before we just go ahead and say absolutely want artificial turf. So I think the vision's artificial turf. That's what will be presented, but it needs to be evaluated with our, with our consultant. You know, we also have to look at the model, how much it's used, the replacement costs of artificial turf. Things like that have to come into play to, to find out what makes the most sense. We think it's artificial turf. We think that's the vision. That's what we're bringing forward. But this will be confirmed through the community outreach process and with information by working with our counsel.
Okay, and. All right, I, I guess, I guess, I, I understand what you're saying. I just, I feel like like it's going to be taken out of our hands because we're now turning it over to Park and Rec. And it's, it's our strategic initiative. And, and it was, and, and we no longer have a say in it.
Well, I, I think that the city council at any time can ask for bringing back something to the city council for review as well.
Okay.
So I think ultimately it will be the city council's ultimate decision. So. And normally we go through the Park and Rec Commission, but I think anytime somebody comes back.
Let's jump in. If, if the council has an understanding that you want artificial turf, we are planning to build an artificial turf. We just want to double check the numbers and make sure it's best practice and all those other things that come along with the obligation if we do artificial turf. But if that was the direction of the council, we have no intent to try to change that. I want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, and, and that, that was my concern is, I mean, even in the, the wording, it, it. Which one was it? The Agreement for Landscape Design and Architectural Services started talking about that these would be natural turf fields and when it will be seeded or sodded. The actual verbiage, if the field will be utilizing seeding for the natural gas fields, we will coordinate the schedule whether it's warm grass or cool grass type. Will depend on when that's planted, da, 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 and, or the use of sod can help. So it, it is. When you see that and from in the language, it, you kind of think it's going that direction because that's what the language says.
Yeah, there's no intent of that going that direction. That's language, I think, from Verde Design and their proposal. And I think some of that had to do with their expertise in if you, if there are areas of the park that are natural turf. There's a certain timing of when that seed or that sod needs to be down, put down in the ground for its ability to be effective turf moving forward as part of the construction. So we do have Derek McKee here with Verde Design as well. He might be able to clarify since I think that was part of his proposal.
Yeah, and it, and it reference, I mean, right after that, then it talks about phase two. So this wasn't about phase two. Phase two came in in the next, right after that language.
Yeah, I, I think for the, for the turf, well, good evening, Mayor and council members, first of all. But for the process, we'll work with the Parks team to work with the community to come up with what the design will be and the content will be. We definitely do synthetic fields. We do natural turf fields. That in the RFQ we submitted on was not determined yet what that direction would be. And we know that, or believe that the, the fields in the basin will probably be natural turf. And I think my language in there was related to the schedule that you're looking at. And the city had a, a target window for construction and opening the facility. And with natural turf fields that there's, there's some, as Bruce mentioned, there's some windows in opportune times to plant, you know, seed and, and those types of things. So anyway, the, the point was that natural grass could just take longer to be established. And but that, that is TBD.
Well, and I know that also Bruce, when he responded to my email, because I had asked why we have so many play areas and picnic areas throughout the park. That and, and the way that the baseball fields are, are baseball and softball are set up there. It, it looks like it's all grassed areas and not, I mean, because of the spreading out of the, the baseball fields, it's, I, I don't know if it would be conducive to have it that far out if you weren't planning on doing, or, or doing natural grasses in there. So I, I just, you know, I, we want tournaments in our town. And our, our soccer group has, has said that, you know, that's where they go to play. They go to play on, on artificial turf. They do lots of tournaments and if we could have year-round play, we could get more here. In fact, that Halloween thing that they just did, they had to turn out away, was it thousands of teams? Because we just don't have enough fields and at this time of the year, some of our fields are, are closed down. Isn't that for recuperation? So. Anyway, all right.
I can just clarify though, the intent is artificial turf for our upper fields. And that, that's what the message was from console back through the strategic initiative process. And that is what the intent is. So maybe that was a little misleading through this process, but I'm hearing again from console, and that was the original strategic initiative, that we, our emphasis is artificial turf for our upper areas because that's how we can maximize those fields.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know if this is discussion or question, but can we just say number one priority would be artificial turf as stated in our strategic plan? If for some reason it has to be grass, you come back and we discuss why it would have to be grass, which I don't understand why it would be. And I think the second thing, like Councilman Rary was saying, our goal with this is to bring in warm bodies to drive economic development, to bring warm bodies into the businesses in Brentwood. So maximizing the number of fields, I think, would be the second thing that we should focus on when the consultant's working on it. I do see all of the empty space. I know that Santa Clara is working on one. They're not going, if I'm correct, they're not even going to have space between the fields in order to maximize the space. So finding a way to maximize it so we get the most fields, I think, would be the second directive that I would have on that after the artificial fields. And I think we discussed that at, at, at the strategic plan meeting, but I, I think this might be discussion. Sorry, Damian. I thought you were out of town. What are you doing here?
I, I am Councilmember Rary. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Just to remind the council, this is a agreement that you're looking at. So putting goals in the motion wouldn't be appropriate tonight. That would be a separate item. We're really focusing on whether or not you're going to approve this professional service agreement.
If we're, if we're agreeing to something, we need to know what we're agreeing to.
Because there's construction and design documents. So are we constructing an artificial turf with design documents? Or are we, are we constructing artificial turf? Because you're going to have sprinkler systems and all that other stuff. And I, I think it's completely different animal if, depending on which one, which way you're going.
And then what if Verde goes and does grass? And then they come back and we're like, that's not what we wanted. And we have to pay more money and do a new contract because we weren't specific in this contract.
As I understand it, the contract does provide the artificial turf option. And I think it's clear to staff, council's feeling on this, but I, all I'm saying is for this item tonight, unless you're going to amend the agreement in some fashion, you're really placing goals is really a separate, separate item. It would be more looking back at your strategic plan and things of that sort, which is not on the agenda tonight.
We amended to add that language, like first priority is artificial, second priority is optimize fields in the agreement.
I'm.
If I'm going to, if we're going to sign an agreement for a lot of money, we want to make sure that they come back with the right thing. If, like, I don't want to spend money and then it come back and I'd be like, well, that's not what I wanted.
Well, I, I do believe the agreement puts in a lot of milestones for participation by both council and the public and the Parks and Rec Commission. And clearly at those moments, if, if anyone feels that it's not going in the direction they want it to go, it could come back. But again, this is just the design contract to start the process.
But, but does it come to the council or does it just go to Park and Rec?
I think as, as the Parks and Recreation Director, as Bruce indicated, at any time if the council wants to review this or talk about this, they can.
Well, he said he can call to review, but you had just said that it'll come back to us, which is different than calling.
Well, at some point it'll come back to you because you'll need to approve the, the steps. But, you know, but if you needed to come back earlier, certainly the council can request that. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to get, get off track here. It was just, the discussion was moving beyond just talking about the artificial turf and, and moving more towards setting goals, which really isn't on the agenda tonight. That was all.
I do think the council's comments are noted and when we go through the planning and design process, the emphasis will be artificial turf and maximizing the space, you know, to maximize the fields for play, which has always been the intent.
And I'll just underscore that. We hear the direction. It wasn't in the CIP originally, it didn't specify turf or otherwise from the strategic plan issue to the CIP book. But I understand that's the direction tonight. And when we amend the CIP book, we'll make sure that's extra clear. So you've got extra coverage that that's the direction you've given is that it should be artificial turf and maximize fields where you can.
Terrific. If there's no further clarifying questions of staff, at this time, we will open public comments. Margaret?
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have some hands, hands raised, so I'll go ahead and share my timer screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman first. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Ah, boy. I'm concerned because it sounds like the direction staff is going to be given is artificial turf. Despite the fact that we haven't even considered what it is we in the community would like to see. And I mean, it sounds like to the point where you folks don't even want to get the party started unless it's specifically artificial turf. This year, it was about a hundred and fifteen degrees at one point. And in full exposure of the sun, artificial turf is hot. There's no getting around that. Natural grass can be played on all year round. I don't believe artificial turf can. In addition to that, and I know that there's this sense of urgency to get it done, but we've waited twenty years. So another twenty months shouldn't break the bank. I think it should be a neighborhood, and I mean the neighborhood of Brentwood, a decision, not a council. You know, yeah, you want to yank it from Park and Rec, they actually should be the entities because like the Planning Commission, that's their job. But why this adamant, we want turf? Honestly, it boggles my mind. As I said, I play with my grandchild. My son has artificial turf in the backyard and it gets hot. And it seems like by using artificial turf, we're going to minimize, we're going to lose days or we're going to sustain injuries because some twelve-year-old kid gets burned sliding across artificial turf at a hundred and fifteen degrees. We have, and it's on Fairview, we have a reclaimed water line that comes down Fairview. So if there's a problem with, well, how do we keep the water going? Well, we have prided ourselves on a water reclamation system. We have a water reclamation system very close to this. So the possible challenge of wasting water should be mitigated. Lastly, we want to be that crown jewel. We want it to look as good as possible. And I think having natural grass is the way to go. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ian. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, council. So I am very excited for this Sand Creek Sports Complex. I only lived in Brentwood for about three years and I heard this has been in planning since like two thousand. And it's very exciting. It's coming fruition. Danny brought some very good points about the turf. And the council sounds very adamant about artificial turf, which from what maybe it was council member Karen Rary brought up. That is what soccer team wants right now, or that's their wish. But how this should go is first, we need this contract, make sure it stipulates that the design firm will work with the council, Parks Rec Commission, the public to determine what do we want, natural or artificial? Work with the soccer teams, work with Parks and Rec, work with the public and come to the determination that way. Don't go into this saying, I only want artificial, I only want natural. Let's come to this as a team of the community of Brentwood. And don't yank this from Parks Rec Commission. Try to collaborate with Parks Rec Commission to the best because Parks Rec Commission is a bunch of citizens who truly care about our city's parks and recreation programming. And I trust them a lot to do a great job with the Sand Creek Sports Complex and council can always check in on them. And in January, I know we'll lose two council members, but with the two new ones, maybe form an ad hoc committee to work hand in hand with the Parks Rec Commission to get our goals aligned. And let's make this better in Brentwood and have an amazing soccer complex done so we can have some fun soccer terminants. And I'm very excited to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marisol. Marisol, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say how happy I am that we're on the next stage with the Sand Creek Park. It's such a great partnership with local sports organizations and the city to bring in revenue. So thank you again, really to this council for making this happen after twenty years. When I saw that rendering from two thousand and two, it just kind of blew my mind to think that it took twenty years for a city council to agree that this was a top priority. So thank you. So thank you to the five of you for making sure that that was a top priority after twenty years when no one else did. Um, but I am a little confused with what's happening tonight and what direction it'll be going in. If you could clarify, uh, and I guess I'm just confused exactly what the vote is for tonight. So is it just to choose Verde and then they're going to go through the process? Will the Parks Commission have a lot of say on this? Will they use their ad hoc committee that they chose? Because I do remember being on a Park and Rec's meeting where Blythe and Kevin actually chose, were chosen to be on that ad hoc committee. So I just kind of wanted to get a little bit more clarification on how much they're going to work with that commission. Because I think it's really important that it's done um, with that commission and not just solely with um, staff and the architect. So if you can maybe clarify how much involvement the process will be between them. Because I really do hope that it is a back and forth with them and the community and that city council does see that progress. And again, I'm really happy to see that Kevin Pelts is on that Planning Commission Ad Hoc Committee, since he has vast experience with youth sports and I hope that they can use his knowledge for that. He's a great resource, especially with all this turf and natural grass and the way that things are set up. Um, he's a great resource to have, so I hope you can really use him and um, there's a little bit more clarity and transparency on what's going to happen moving forward. So again, thank you and I'm so excited for the next steps.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina. Carolina, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. So um, I'm just going to bring in a slightly different perspective because I own a dog and many of you own dogs. And Oakley has a phenomenal dog park. It's huge. And it gets shut down for a week every time it rains. Because the dogs with their paws and their claws running on the grass destroy the turf. Uh, the same thing happens at Kings Park in Brentwood. When it rains, it just becomes a muddy pit and it is unusable until the um, the mud dries up and then Tara has to come in and fix the grass. So I understand that AstroTurf gets hot. However, from a maintenance standpoint, grass is really, really, really expensive. And these kids are used to playing on all kinds of surfaces, so it's not as big um, a travesty to consider AstroTurf. And I, I do agree with Marisol that um, there should be public input on this, but um, you also have to take a look at the practicality and the maintenance. If you're going to have a soccer tournament with hundreds of kids and playing soccer on the, on the grass all day, you will destroy the field. You will absolutely destroy the field because the cleats are much more destructive than the claws. So just for a different perspective uh, for my dog who is out for a walk right now. Wolf.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brayden Hayna. Brayden, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Um, I just wanted to come on here and, and show my support for the sporting complex. Um, as an athlete, um, you know, I played on turf for football and yeah, it does get real hot in the summertime. It's like you're standing on top of a stove. You're sweating, running around. It's, it's brutal. But I, you know, I've been advocating for so long for more resources in the city for, for our youth. Um, sports is very close to my, to my heart. If it was up to me, I'd bring a, a pro sports team out here to tell you the truth. Um, but you know, this is a start. Um, yeah, it's a great idea. Been in the planning for a while. I supported, whether it goes turf or grass, you know, grass is hard to keep up with and uses a lot of water and turf gets hot. There's flaws in, in, in any way you think about it, but there's really no need to start nitpicking at it. It's whatever's best for the city and whatever the residents want uh, at the end of the day. Um, and that's just all I wanted to come on here and say, so thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
And thank you, Margaret. Um, yeah, I wasn't going to comment on this, but um, just listening to the discussion, I just wanted to throw in this thought, uh, I don't have uh, kids. Uh, it's been fifty years since I played soccer. So um, but from a perspective of any Brentwood resident should support this soccer field because of the economic opportunity that it brings as well as, you know, I do care about the youth in our city and I want them to have good experiences. And I think a soccer league would be great for them. But I also think it's great for the city um, in terms of the tournaments will bring traffic and it will help the smaller, the small businesses around the, the hotels, the restaurants. And uh, looking at that, um, and mindful of comments that were made earlier, it sounds like to get the tournament traffic, artificial is going to be the way to go. So that's something we need to keep in mind that, that this is something that the tournament organizers are asking for. And part of the purpose of this is to um, bring in the tournaments to bring some, some economic benefit to the city. So I, I definitely, I value um, the comments that are made by, by the folks that were speaking tonight about the uh, potential problems with, with artificial turf. You know, we, we all, we all know that artificial turf is, is hard. And uh, I think that those concerns have to be taken into consideration. And I do think that it's important to hear from the community. But just from my two cents, from my perspective, looking at it as an economic investment for the city, I think artificial turf might be the better way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment, uh, move into council discussion. Uh, Councilmember Rary.
Um, so we did do an extensive public outreach. Uh, I think it was two years for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Our largest group of, of, that, that came in was the soccer contingent and, and mayor, wasn't there well over a hundred soccer players that came in that day to discuss the things that they wanted? And artificial turf was at the top of their list. I, I, I've never seen so many, I mean, kids were getting up and talking about what they wanted. The, the other thing which I really liked in the um, information that was provided to us by Verde's was that they utilized a um, since they, they, they have been using on alternative syn- synthetic turf in fill. That's easy to say. Um, like cork, coconut or olive pits instead of the SBR or ground tire rubber. The organic in fills help keep the field cooler and have a better smell and appearance. And, and um, Brayden Hayden was, is right. I, it does get hot. I, I've been out on Relay for Life um, events that took place over at Liberty and that, the field does get hot. My son used to play football and um, you know, during their summer training, it's, it's they, they are down on their hands doing a lot of the, the warmups. So yes, um, it, it can get hot. So I do like this synthetic turf infill that uh, and that, that might be something to look at. Um, while they're, while they're investigating all the rest. But um, we have had a, a huge two-year extensive um, outreach regarding what was needed in the Parks and Rec and that was done in our master plan. In fact, we had four tur- it's artificial turf fields, I think scheduled or, or put into a CIP waiting list for funding for, for um, Sunset Park. So um, it, it was something that has been asked for and have, they've been waiting on. So anyway, that, that is, uh, it has been asked for. And, and I, I actually was on the Park and Rec Commission that put this on the books. So I have been, I've been on from nine, the end of nineteen ninety-nine, the last three months of nineteen ninety-nine. I was on the interim commission. Uh, the real commission started in two thousand. I was on till two thousand and three. And so we did put this field and it was the Sand Creek Soccer Complex. For twenty years, it was the soccer complex and it's just in the last year been turned into a sports complex. So instead of just soccer. Um, anyway, and if you go back through the CIPs, it's, it's in there as soccer complex. That's, that's all I have to say. And I would like to make the motion on this, ladies, gentlemen. Um, I, I've been waiting a long time for this one to come to fruition and be funded.
Um, just, I understand what Danny's saying about it being hot. I get it. Like I have it in my backyard. It does get hot. But if you talk, I've talked to a lot of the people whose kids play and the kids that play and they prefer playing on artificial turf. I think that we're going to get a lot more. I mean, we get a lot of teams wanting to play out here. But um, I actually did go to an Oakland Roots game, ran into someone that lives in Montclair. And they mentioned how there was opportunities with our grass fields at Sunset because sometimes they get divots. Um, some, you know, some of the slopes. So I think that they were recommending artificial, if we could change even Sunset to artificial, because it's easier on the kids that play. I don't play soccer. I don't play sports, so I don't know. But um, artificial turf wasn't just because it was our choice. It's because like um, Councilmember Rary was saying, they heard about it on in their meetings. I've heard about it from all of the parents that their kids are playing. So it's, we're not doing it just because we think it looks better. It actually is safer for the kids when they're playing and it's easier to maintain. Like if there's a big divot in grass, sometimes it takes a while for people to go fix that. Like, you know, you just can't turn that around on a dime. So that, you know, that's happening. But I, I do agree, you know, it's, it's interesting because I do remember it's always been soccer and I don't know who changed it to sports. But like I was mentioning in the discussion, the purpose of it is to optimize soccer, right? You can't be all things to all people. You got to do what you're doing right and well. And then we can look at more projects down the line for other sports. But um, I do think the emphasis for Verde when they're working on this should be on soccer and optimizing the space. Uh, I, like again, you know, Santa Clara is doing the same thing. And they are getting so many fields in a small space because they are packing them in and doing them um, side just, you know, right by each other. So I think that we need to be um, smart about that so that we can get more teams in, which means more kids get to play, which means we bring in more warm bodies, more people at tournaments, more people in our hotels, more people eating in our restaurants, more people shopping in our stores. So I mean, it's, the more we optimize it, I think the better is for our city overall. But I'm very, very excited.
Thank you, Councilmember Rary.
One last comment on um, you know, the, the use of the, the grass. Uh, I believe it was uh, Mr. Dorman had said. I, I just looked down in, in Anaheim, watching my granddaughter and my grandson play flag football. And boy, this, this group really optimizes. There, there was field after field. And I mean, there was just enough place to, to sit between, you know, for spectators. And then there was another field. But it was also raining, just sprinkling, but they said if it gets any harder than that, they call all the games to preserve the field because if you're out there playing on a wet field, you're, you're ripping the field up. Um, and so, yeah, they, they've had quite a few games already called because of rain. Fortunately, I guess they're getting rained in Southern California. We like some of it up here. Uh, I know we had some, but we, we, we like more. But anyway, that's, that's it. And, and I would like to make the motion as detailed in the staff report, adopt the resolution approving the agreement with Verde Design for Landscape Design Architectural Service for the Sand Creek Sports Complex.
And I will happily second that.
We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Bryant.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, we'll take a moment for all of the families that are watching at home to celebrate. Take a breath. This is very, very exciting. Um, thank you, staff. Thank you, Bruce, uh, for, for your work on this. I'm very much looking forward to this. Uh, this time we'll move into item D two. Item D two pertains to a city policy violation allegation raised by Councilmember Rary against Vice Mayor Rodriguez. Councilmember Rary will present her allegation and Vice Mayor Rodriguez will provide his response to the allegation, followed by public comment before deliberating on the allegation. And so at this time, uh, Councilmember Rary.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before Councilmember Rary begins, as this item, the underlying allegations uh, involves my performance evaluation, I'm going to be recusing myself from this matter. Um, we have Special Counsel Tim Davis from the law firm Burke Williams and Sorensen. He'll be sitting with the council this evening on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Damian. And uh, thank you, Tim uh, Davis for helping us in this matter. So at this time, I will turn it to Councilmember Rary to present her allegation. Uh, Councilmember Rary.
So you know, last month, the, the Vice Mayor had come on, you know, demanding that it be heard, why, why the sensor was brought up and that he had never done anything wrong. And it was in June of last year uh, during the um, evaluations of the city manager and the city attorney. That uh, there is, we, we receive in a confidential envelope um, documentation, which we are in a fill out seal. Once we filled it out, we're just sealed this confidential envelope and um, and return it um, for outside attorney to view. Um, it was during the um, when, when all of them were, were brought together and, and each one of us was able to see what during our closed session meeting, I had noticed that the handwriting on um, uh, Vice Mayor Rodriguez's um, evaluation was of it, it was feminine like. So um, and, and I kept, because we weren't um, meeting in person. I, I think we, we didn't meet in person for a, a bit of time. And when we did meet in person, um, he sat on the opposite side of the dais from me, so I couldn't see what his handwriting looked like. So it was probably a good six months before I could actually, we, we, we took a break and I walked past his desk and, and I could finally see what his handwriting looked like. Um, and it was nowhere close to the, the handwriting that um, that was in the packet. Now, um, part of the language. Uh, so anyway, then I brought that to um, our city attorney that, you know, I had concerns that um, information, confidential information was shared with an outside party. He listened to what I had to say. Um, at that time, he didn't think that there was anything wrong with it. Um, it wasn't until we met with Tim Davis, I think in April of the following year for uh, for the, the next evaluation period that I was able to talk to him. Um, he did say that uh, that it is a serious concern for um, confidential information. Um, and uh, I think he conversed with Damian at that time. They uh, they said that they would talk to the Vice Mayor about it. I then didn't, I, I, I then got a response from Tim Davis stating that um, they I, I, I then got a response from Tim Davis stating that, um, they had spoke with him and if I'd like to hear from him. Um, so, to let him know, so I had tried to contact him and I left a message and I. It was probably several months before I saw Tim Davis again at the conference in Southern California. Um, just this past September. Um, and anyway, all of this. I, I, I guess when he said he hasn't done anything wrong last month. Um, it was frustrating because that was not in true fact, uh, that was not the fact. Um, the, the, under the integrity portion that we sign under, that we certify. Under, it says, I refrain from disclosing confidential information concerning personnel. Or other city, well, it's concerning litigation, personnel, property or other affairs of the city without proper legal authority. Um, so. When it says confidential on the envelope, you don't share that with somebody else. Um. It, if, so, it, you know, if there's a reason why you needed to share it, it needs to be. Um, brought to the city manager, I believe is what it, it states, in fact. Um, Damian had sent a. Um, something to that effect that unless it is. Um. There was a response to a question that, um. I guess Councilmember Mendoza had requested. Um. And wouldn't you know, when, when I looked it up earlier, it was, there was hardly anything from Damian, um, but now. So anyway, it, it did say that it, it, it would need to go through, um. It, it would need to be a good reason and you are not to share with anybody, including family and friends. In the document, in the email that Damian sent out. So that is my. I, and, you know, again, if. Oh, here it is. It says, it's covered in your orientation meetings with me in reference in AB one, two, three, ethics training. Um, that, uh, this, these, um. Uh, matters discussed in closed session remain confidential unless the majority of the city council authorizes staff or their colleagues to. Disclose the information or if the law requires disclosure, the confidentiality requirements extend beyond just not. Disclosing closed, closed session information to the general public, but including disclosing such information to family and friends. So. It says confidential for a reason. And, and. You don't share that information with somebody else. And so I'm asking for, um. I believe it was, since we don't have time for the censure or, uh, I believe it was sanction was. The auctions. Yeah, I believe it was sanctioned. And that's, that's. My discussion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, uh, we will. Turn the floor to Vice Mayor Rodriguez, uh, for his response to the allegation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for your, for this opportunity, I'll be honest, it's a little frustrating, but understanding, um. In regards to, um. The censuring and the Councilmember, um, Rary just mentioned that I responded, that I had done nothing wrong. Or nothing was brought up or anything, I don't remember exactly, I know that it was last month. The reason why I said that was because when Councilmember, uh, Rary and Mendoza had made allegations of concerns. And possible censuring of the Vice Mayor, it was because of a resident, if I remember correctly, she hadn't mentioned a resident, she didn't mention anything. In regards to this, um, that's the reason why I was a little bit. Caught off guard when it didn't move forward anymore, because I heard a response, I think from Councilmember Rary, if I remember correctly. That there, there was a residence that had concerns in regards to the Vice Mayor, so that's my reasoning for bringing that up, um. I think last month at the meeting, also, um, a response to Councilmember Rary and the writing and things like that. I think it's pretty, I've been an open book for about thirty years, I, I know that, um, in working in the community for as long as I have, in working with young people. I've always expressed the difficulties that I have at times in regards to expressing myself when it comes to writing. Um, I know that it's, it's something that I've always had a challenge with. Um, I know that I have, um, the, um, struggle with that, and it's something that, you know, obviously I've tried to work on. But I, just so that Councilmember member, all you, uh, Councilmembers know, I'm sorry, I'm just frustrated with this, um. My wife actually assisted me in regards to working on the evaluations. The reason why was I was having a hard time expressing my thoughts when it came to the evaluations of the city manager and also the city attorney. I know that that evaluations were very important, and I wanted to make sure that I was able to express my thoughts through that. My wife took my thoughts, put them on paper for me, and assisted me. There was no one else, we didn't talk about anything that was discussed in closed sessions, I didn't. I did not think that it was a violation of policy or anything like that, but. The reason why my wife helped me with that was because, like I said before, I struggled. I struggled by expressing myself on paper, and I wanted to make sure that I did an adequate job when it came to the evaluation of both those individuals. Uh, so once again, like I said, when I. I guess Councilmember, uh, Rary is saying that I brought it up that I have done nothing wrong, was because of her comments that there was a resident. That had concerns pertaining to the Vice Mayor, which. I haven't heard anything yet from that, the other thing that concerned me though is that this happened in two thousand, two thousand twenty-one, and we're barely addressing it now, when. Technically, this is my last meeting, I have a half a meeting, I think, coming up on the thirteenth. Um, and we waited so long to address this when we had so much, so much time to address this. So once again, I just wanted to be transparent, I'm not here to violate things or, I mean, break policies. If we were to look at policies and violations, um, yeah, that'd be interesting, uh, pertaining to council, so in saying that. Um, that's where I'm at, and, um, if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than being transparent.
Thank you, uh, at this time. We will, uh, open public comments regarding this item, turn it to you, Margaret.
I received no written public comments regarding this item, if you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I'm going to speak, remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have two hands raised, I'll go ahead and share the timer screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman, Mister Dorman, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, I mentioned this in the, uh. Comment I had made on my Facebook page. Uh, in part, uh. I figured the council was gonna go for the wagging of the finger and saying, no, no, you shouldn't have done that. Uh. The challenge I have, and I make no bones about this, I am not a fan of the Vice Mayor. That being said. I believe in my heart of hearts that if there were discretion similar to this. With any other member of the council, that I would feel the same way. And we need to teach, and I'm not talking about teaching. Uh, Vice Mayor, because he's getting out. But teach those who are coming in, that there are rules, there are ramifications and there are repercussions. Based upon the three, uh, choices you have. Um. Without all the facts that are in evidence, uh. It seems a little derelict in duty if you don't go for censure. And that's the only remedy to dig deeper into this. Uh, unfortunately, you can't do it any other way, the, uh, the first one is pointing to the woodshed. The second option is wagging the finger, the third one is the, okay, we have to find out and dig deep why. And that is the true parliamentary, and not only that, the rights, uh, that, that our Vice Mayor has to defend himself. Uh, otherwise, this winds up just being allegations and possibly half truths. Um, so I hope that. You go for the censure. Uh, again, because we wanna show. We wanna show that we are getting past the shenanigans of previous administrations. This could very simply be, you know, a. Ah, uh, I can't believe this is such a trivial BS thing, um, you know, and I'm, I'm. Getting hauled out in front of it, you know, if, if I were the Vice Mayor, it could be something that simple, but then again, it might not be. And it's the night, might not be, that will determine whether or not we go back to the whole backroom dealings and. Things like that.
The speaker's timer had expired, the next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, um. I wanna go more with process tonight, the, the agenda packet for this item states, the council may wish to consider the policy's applicability. As it specifically does not apply to violations of state or federal laws. Um, the agenda packet, I think, is wrong on this point, nowhere in the policy is there any mention of this application. Uh, the policy states that the policy supplements, but does not supplant other laws and rules regarding the legal responsibilities. Of city officials. Um, to say that the policy is not enforceable because it quote-unquote supplants section five, four, nine, six, three is nonsense. A simple finding that a council member failed to refrain from disclosing confidential information. In no way meets the standards required to successfully pursue a charge under section five, four, nine, six, three in state law. Section five, four, nine, six, three is very detailed and specific, and in fact, it's too long for me to read it to you here. Uh, to say this. Council cannot enforce their own policies on the off chance the policy may be indicative of a violation of state law is absurd. You would have to go through the entire policy, compare every item to state law. And strike any of them that would be in any way similar to an action prohibited under the law. The unintended consequence of adopting such policy would be to allow dishonorable conduct on our city council. Simply because there is such a high barrier to taking a case to court, we all know Brown Act violations are very rarely prosecuted, not, as far as I know, still never successfully. This cannot be the intent of the council when they wrote this policy, as evidenced by the very obvious fact that such provisions have been included in the policy. So no, I don't buy that, I think a more honest reading of supplements, but does not supplant. Would indicate that just because a council member is sanctioned or censured. That does not supplant the possibility of any prosecution under state law. I will give another example in my comments when the ethics and conduct policy revision is brought up for discussion. For now, if the allegations prove to be correct, I recommend that Vice Mayor Rodriguez be sanctioned. As he has wisely decided not to run again and will be off this council before the censure procedure can be completed. Um, and I thought I was gonna go a little bit long with this, and since we have a little bit of time left, I wanna echo. Uh, Mister Dorman's sentiment, and as you all well know, I, I care very much about integrity on our, in our city government. And we've seen, um. You know, letting rules slip in the past and what it gets us, and I can tell you firsthand that people, when they're caught. And will not often take responsibility, and then they can be angry at you, they've been angry at me. But I can tell you that, that it's absolutely vital that this board, this. City council maintains the absolute integrity and trust in this community that we all deserve, thank you so much.
Thank you, the next speaker is Antonio Xavier. Mister Xavier, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
There are some listening tonight who are going to ask, what's the big deal? I am not one of them. Trust and transparency in public officials forms the bedrock of a functional government. You are elected officials and your actions as an elected official represent Brentwood. When it comes to ethics and integrity, your goal should not be to do the bare minimum. Hold yourself to a higher standard, set an example for the rest of us. Don't toe up to the line and think everything is fine. Stay far away and strive to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. I see you smirking currently, Vice Mayor, some of us take this thing very seriously. Vice Mayor Rodriguez has acknowledged his misstep. We all heard it, we understand it, what comes next is completely up to the council to decide, thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Brayden Heena. Brayden, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret, you know, the Vice Mayor's smirking because this is just a laughing stock, that's what this whole thing is. If you wanna talk about holding accountable, holding council members accountable. Why don't we talk about how two of the council members already violated policy to get to this point? How come we are gonna talk about how they went around going to the mayor to get to this point, as they should have done, as the policy clearly states in black and white? And sure, you guys are gonna tell me, oh, the Brown Act, the Brown Act, okay, well, they violated the Brown Act, who did that, whose fault was that, that was their fault? What, what, what else are you supposed to do about that, that's their own fault for going to each other instead of following the policy and going to the mayor like they should have. The Vice Mayor already stated that he has issues, you know, uh, expressing himself when it comes to putting pen to paper. So what else is there to discuss, what else is there to further investigate? Why is there a need to censure him and single him out when other council members have already violated policy as well? I've said from the beginning, this is, this is a load of crap. This is a waste of time, we should be focusing on so many other things in the city, I mean, we took a great step in the right direction with the sports complex. You're just ruining my mood, I was so happy about that, I was celebrating, I was already getting ready to pop an apple cider, 'cause I can't drink yet, no champagne, apple cider. That's, but this, this is a whole laughing matter, I just feel so bad for the Vice Mayor that he's constantly bullied and picked on. He doesn't deserve it, the people of Brentwood don't deserve this. Constant bickering back and forth of disagreements and. Again, I'm gonna say it one more time before I hop off. If he's to be held accountable for violating policy, the other two should be held accountable for violating policy as well. And that's all I get.
Thank you, the next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret, um, I want to explain to the previous caller. Why this is so important, he's very young. He has not really held any positions of responsibility, and he has not worked. In a setting where confidentiality is really, really important. I understand that Councilmember Rodriguez may have trouble expressing himself. There are many tools available to him, uh, to aid in that effort. And if he had trouble expressing himself, he's the one that should have gone to the mayor and said. Mayor Joel, I'm having problems filling out this evaluation. Because I'm having trouble expressing himself, and let the mayor help him find a solution. There's a reason why, uh, these evaluations are confidential. Because you do not want anything getting out into the community. Um, in a corporation, if Johnny had done what he said he did, he would be fired. Immediately, he would be walked out the door with a box with all his stuff, there would be no discussion, there would be no. Explanation, he violated protocol, he is out the door. And when it comes to performance evaluations, it is. And when it comes to performance evaluations, it is especially sensitive. So I understand why Councilmember Rodriguez did what he did, but what he did is incredibly wrong. Having said that, moving forward, it has to be very, very clear to all future city councils that when you are handling sensitive personnel, information, it is critical that people follow the protocol. If there are problems, then you go to the mayor to ask for assistance, but you do not go to a family member and ask for assistance. It is sensitive information of the, I, I, I just can't stress how important that is. Again, this has to set a precedent for future city councils and for all future handling of data. And I, I hope that young man actually listens to what I'm saying because he's not knowledgeable in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ian. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to hop on and reiterate what Carolina has is saying to Brayden about the seriousness of these allegations against our vice mayor. And I hope the proper steps are taken to investigate the vice mayor, even though his term is coming to an end. He is still fully responsible for his actions as Vice Mayor Brentwood and will be held fully accountable to our power. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised. Oh, I do have one more hand raised. Greg, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Margaret, Mayor, City Council, and all of Brentwood. My name is Greg Robinson, and I'm on the record that I am not speaking as the publisher of the newspaper, but speaking as a resident of 28 years. And I cannot believe the amount of time and energy that we are putting into something that is getting so twisted out of proportion. And the people that are just hearing bits and pieces of this, that are hearing anything negative about Mr. Rodriguez. I've known Johnny for 23 years before I even worked at the Brentwood Press. And he's been nothing but an upstanding, hardworking person who took his life and turned it around and has helped so many youth in our community get through the trials and tribulations and taught them ethics, taught them responsibility and taught them to be upstanding citizens. And you guys are berating him, dragging his name through the mud when what he did is the same thing that I do all the time with my wife. I am not a good writer. I don't do good reviews at my company because I don't have the ability to put my thoughts on paper. So I asked my wife, help me with this. I'm going to tell you my thoughts and you help me write it down. And that's what Johnny did with his wife in confidence, in the privacy of his own home. He could not ask anybody to help him put his thoughts on paper, except the one person in his life that is his wife, who stands by his side, who is there to, who is also an amazing person that has done so much for this community. Right? He then put it into a confidential envelope and turned it in. Because from what I understand, because nobody showed us any real documentation, but from what I understand, it was an evaluation form, which meant it was his opinion of the situation. It was his thoughts of the situation. His wife helped him put it on the paper. He turned it in and then it became confidential. And I want to know why Vice Mayor Karen Rary was looking at the confidential information over Johnny's shoulder. And if she thought there was some discrepancy in the handwriting, why didn't she ask him? Is that your handwriting? He could have said, no, it's my wife's. I helped her have me write me this form. He could have typed it and no one ever would have known anything. But because Johnny's not a good typer either, just like Greg Robinson, it takes me twice as long to send an email because I'm not a good typist. But my wife is great. And today she actually helped me compose an email because it says, hey, I'm so frustrated. I can't get this right. So please, everybody that's out there, Johnny Rodriguez is an amazing young man. He's had a great asset to Brentwood and how many dollars are we wasting right now? The council ladies that say be in fiscal responsibility. I want to know how much we're paying this attorney to sit here and listen to everybody berate my friend Johnny. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vince. Vince, go ahead.
Hi, I grew up in the Brentwood area and I went to school with Johnny and I could, we could both agree that the education we got at Liberty back in the early nineties was not probably the best, especially with him being a star athlete. He probably had less focus on his studies. Let's all be honest here, folks. Everybody on here discusses confidential, confidential information with our husbands or wives. He was honest. He's on his way out. But if you're going to sit here and see that you guys don't discuss confidential information with your significant other, you're about as honest as Trump's speech tonight. So he's on his way out the door. He was honest with you about it. Instead of looking over his shoulder next time, maybe you should ask him, did you do that or did not do that? And you know what? If he would have typed it, now we'd have known. Okay, so I think this is one last thing on the way out the door, but he is a son of Brentwood like I am. He grew up here like I did. I can't see. Maybe you guys have on the board. Maybe you guys have not on the board. But let's put this to bed, move on. He told you what happened and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Doe. Mr. Doe, go ahead.
Margaret, it's Holly. Speaking of, I'm sorry, I had to put John Doe. I had a work meeting earlier, but I'm calling because I wanted to say Johnny has been a great asset to the community. He's done wonderful things. I have 20 years in human resources and I have to say I work with confidential evaluations, probably at least once a week. And there are times where our managers go to their significant others and ask for guidance. And I have to say Johnny, you've done great for the community. This is another example of city council and their bullying and it's going to come to light. Johnny, you've done great and I'm sorry this is happening.
I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments and move into council discussion regarding, regarding this item, Councilmember Rary.
First off, I didn't look over his shoulder to look at this. We receive a copy of every councilperson's evaluation. I've got all five of their evaluations in this packet. I have never walked out of a council meeting or out of a closed session meeting with any paperwork whatsoever because it's confidential, except this, because I needed to be able to compare it to Johnny's handwriting. As I said, he picks up his paperwork and he leaves with it. He's on the other side of the dais from me. It took about six months to actually, until there was a break in the meeting. I saw the writing. I went straight to the city attorney. I spoke to him about it. At that time, he said that he didn't feel that there was an issue. It was at that point that I spoke with Hobita Mendoza, Councilmember Mendoza, because there wasn't an issue according to our city attorney. It wasn't until several months later when I had a chance to speak with Tim Davis, who was the attorney hired to handle the evaluations that, and this is why it's taken so six, nine months. I mean, we're, we're into 2022. By the time I was able to speak with Tim Davis again, it wasn't until September of 2022. So Johnny said he needed help writing that. I believe we've gone through four evaluations. This is the fourth evaluation. And this is the first time he's needed his wife to write it for him. It's confidential. It arrives in a confidential envelope. It is returned in a confidential envelope. Confidential doesn't mean you share it with your wife or husband or significant other. It means that it is confidential and it is not to be shared with anyone. If he needed help, there are writing it. There are four other councilpeople that he could have went to to ask for that help. He could have contacted Tim Davis, the attorney handling this and dictated it to him over the phone. But he didn't do any of those things. It specifically says that I refrain from disclosing confidential, under integrity, information concerning personnel without proper legal authority. Did he go and get proper legal authority to disclose this? Again, he could have contacted the, the, the attorney that was handling this and dictated it over the phone to him. He could have reached out to one of the other councilmembers or the mayor and, and asked for help in dictating it, but instead he took confidential information and gave it to a third party.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, a couple of things. I don't talk about anything we talk about in confidential meetings with anybody. And trust me, my husband asks, I do not tell him a thing. It is no one's business, whether we're negotiating contracts, whether we're negotiating raises for our bargaining units, whether we're talking about reviews, whether, whatever it is that we're talking about. I don't talk about it. And trust me, there's stuff that people ask, hey, this item was on the agenda on your, on your closed session. Can you talk about it? I don't talk about it. I don't do it in my day job. I wouldn't do it in my night job. If you tell me to keep my mouth shut, I'm going to keep it shut. You know, at the beginning, Brayden during public comment mentioned that we were going, that, you know, we want more transparency and integrity. And the minute we try to do that, they don't want us to do that. It's very interesting, but there's a few things that happen. This is just one of them, right? There's other things that happen. One of them with the resident who's too afraid to come forward and that's their choice. I'm not going to force anyone to come forward. I, I gave him the options from Damian. They decide what to do with it. I think Carolina mentioned the reason we don't talk about things is that because things that people are talking about in the public. I was at an event and someone came up to me and knew everything about Tim Ogden's review, everything. They mentioned what the mayor said. They mentioned what Councilmember Meyer said. They mentioned what Councilmember Rary said. The only person they didn't mention was Mr., was Vice Mayor Rodriguez. So I don't know if you recall, Vice Mayor, I went into a closed session. The next closed session that we had and I said, no, but I was at an event.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Mendoza, what, what's on the agenda today is specifically about the evaluation and whether
Yes. So they got the information from him because he spoke about it when someone wrote it for him.
Councilmember, if there is a new allegation that you're making, then
No, no, it's not new. It's the same one. It's that paperwork that then was but someone read it. So it was put out in the ether and it was supposed to be confidential. And it wasn't.
I think the allegation we're talking about tonight, in fairness, is somebody filling out the evaluation.
I think, I think the other thing is, I think what this does is it sets a tone for the, for us going forward, all of us. Are we going to choose to follow policy or are we not? So we need to be able to trust each other that these documents that we fill out are filled out by the individual and are not shared with anyone. So I think we need to take action so that going forward, this never, ever happens again. We, we just can't do it on this council. It's just, it, it, it's not the right thing to do for, for our public. We need to hold each other accountable. And if I do something, hold me accountable. I'm, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, I just wanted to say a couple more things. Thank you, Mayor. One in regards to Tim Davis, and I know Karen Rary said that it took a long process to discuss this issue again with him. I think all of us as council members, or we have access to people that have Tim Davis's number, that could have contacted him and could have addressed this a lot longer than, that it took like a year and a half to do this. And also in regards to, I think, Councilmember Rary said, and in the opening remarks was that she walked by during a council meeting and was able to see the writing. So I think that's why certain members of the community are saying, looking over the shoulder kind of a thing. One of the things that I'm, I'm really concerned about is that this is starting to become consistent, right? I just now heard Councilmember Mendoza say it again in regards to a resident having concerns and they didn't want to come forward because of fear my, myself. When nothing was brought to fruition or nothing was brought to council, nothing was proven. I still don't know, understand what they're talking about. It's really getting concerning to me and really frustrating me because it looks like I might have to look at legal counsel in the future in regards to the allegations now that once again they're being brought up at a meeting when these are things that are not even supposed to be discussed tonight. It was discussing in regards to this. And honestly, I don't, I don't, I'm not the kind of person that hides and runs and does all that stuff. Being very transparent, very honest, what you guys want to do is what you want to do, but to continue to make allegations that have no facts and nothing in fruition is very disappointing. So I'm just there. I don't know, Tim, if you have, Tim Davis, if you have anything to say. Yeah, thank you.
Well, I just, I just think that we need to keep, keep it on the agenda. I gave you a little rope there since there were some other discussions not on the agenda being addressed. So in fairness, I'll let you get that out there, but I just think we need to stick to the, to the matter at hand. If we could, please.
Mr. Davis, I, I do have a couple of clarifying questions from you regarding this, and then I'll call in Councilmember Meyer. In, in your legal position and your legal opinion, it's, and it's very important, clearly not only to myself, but the rest of the council, all of the council. Was there a violation of closed session procedure? Or, or law or regulation in this as one, first question?
Well, there, there certainly is an allegation of that. And, you know, until everything is, is reviewed and investigated to determine if there are mitigating circumstances or aggravating circumstances. I'm not here, I'm not here to, to address a Brown Act violation, but there clearly is an allegation against it. Putting aside the Brown Act, clearly evaluations are confidential and shouldn't be discussed. I think that's, that's clear. That's, that's been discussed previously to tonight, and that's, that's my opinion still.
Okay, thank, thank you. I, I've got further thoughts in, in this process, but at this time, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. We do like to have challenging discussions, don't we? But the truth is, and this is probably going off topic, we are not elected to have comfortable conversations. And one of the uncomfortable things we have to discuss on a regular basis is our own accountability. I've heard from residents on both sides of this discussion. There are people that think the timing is unfortunate. I, I would actually agree with the timing being unfortunate, but I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is the timing can't be part of our decision. Either there was a problem or there wasn't, but the fact that that the vice mayor is about to leave should not be part of what we decide to do, other than the fact that some some of our actions could not actually be followed through on because of time. some of our actions could not actually be followed through on because of timing. I'd like to mention the sacredness, if you will, of closed sessions, and I would agree that I, as much as I would love to tell my husband what happens after the fact, I don't. I don't tell anyone. And that is something that we have to be very careful about. So on the one hand, we've got, like I said, residents that are saying this is this is bad timing, this is too far, this is, you know, making a mountain out of a molehill. On the other hand, we've got residents that are reaching out and saying, look, you guys are doing it right. There are other neighboring cities that are not that need to be doing similar kinds of accountability discussions. I want to mention that we've actually stopped a closed session in the past. We had a new staff member who was part of a closed session with us, and that staff member was in an open room where another family member was walking around in the room behind them. And we stopped the session and said, you can't be on this, in this meeting unless you go into a room with the door closed. Because you have to keep that confidential. You cannot involve anyone else in this discussion who isn't part of this discussion. I think censure is not an appropriate action based on the timing. I totally agree with that. The, it's boy, this isn't easy. I think anyone watching knows me well enough to know this is not my comfort zone. But that's not, that's not the point. We have to go outside of our comfort zone. I feel like there's still discussion that could be had. I think about this in terms of if it were me, if it were one of the other council members, is this specific to the vice mayor? I do believe that if one of us was called out on this, we would have to have a very open discussion about it because we're working on this whole transparency thing. We've been, you know, we've been focused as long as I've been on council, and I'm sure with other people before, focused on communication, focused on transparency, focused on accountability, and it's really important to us. So this is a challenging discussion to have, but I think what we need to do in really thinking about this, and I'm saying council and the public, is to remove the timing of it, remove who we're talking about, and have this discussion based on this as an occurrence. Is this occurrence something that we want to call out as being inappropriate? And I think that's all I've got right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
I'm gonna say, it is a hard discussion to have. I think that's one of the reasons, like, I felt like, do I say something, do I not? So it's not like you don't want to hurt people, and that's never the intent. And I think some people feel like that's, the intent is not to hurt. I think what I came to think about is the intent is to set a standard for us and what is acceptable and what is not, right? And I don't want to move forward on a council that doesn't follow the rules. And if you know me and my personal life, I'm a big rule follower. Like, it actually bothers people how much I follow the rules. I don't like gray. I like black and white. It's just, I live in spreadsheets. It's the way my mind works. So it's it's, we have to set a standard, and it could have been Vice Mayor, it could have been me, it could have been any of us. But I think it's setting the tone for the kind of city council that we want. That is the most important thing, and it's just, it sucks that it's happening. Like, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but but you know, it's something we gotta do if we want integrity on our council.
I would like to read for those in the community that do not have or have not taken the opportunity to look at the staff report on this and exactly what I know Councilmember Rary has talked about, recommended sanction. I think it's important for everyone to understand exactly what that means. Then also I'll read the definition in the staff report. It says, "The next most severe form of action, sanctions are directed at a specific member of council for a specific act or a set of actions that is determined to be a violation of a policy but not sufficiently serious to require censure. A sanction unlike a censure is not a punishment, but does permit the member accused of a violation an opportunity to provide a written or verbal response, and it does not require a separate hearing." And the reason I wanted to point that out is you know, Councilmember Mendoza, Councilmember Meyer have both said something that is, for me, it's the core of the issue, and also Councilmember Rary and the vice mayor. So we've all said this tonight. And that is this. This goes beyond an incident and goes to the very heart of responsibility and the I'm trying to think of another word, but the word sacrosanct, that which is specifically set aside as wholly untouchable, deeply important, all of those things. We have got, number one, when council is in a closed session, and I know all of us have already said this, but I'm going to say it again, it's absolutely essential that we are able to be completely transparent and frank with each other. We can express concerns, we can express support, we can express experiences that would give structure to our concerns so that our fellow council members can understand where we're coming from and why in certain things. And there are things that are so very essential in the well-being of our community. Every one of us took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state constitution, but we also have committed ourselves to making sure that to the very best of our conscience and ability, we make pure decisions regarding the well-being of our families and the decisions our cities make, our city makes that are going to have longstanding effects or short-term effects on the lives of our community. Every decision we make, to some degree, is going to affect someone or many people in our community. And if we are not able to have frank discussions and protect the people or the circumstances in closed session and have certainty that we can have confidence in each other, and not just this council, every single person that sits on council in the future. We have got to hold each other accountable. There are very few ways that as councils, we can hold each other accountable. This is one. And it is true. It doesn't just set a standard and send a message to our community for this council, but it does for all councils. We also need to make sure that if we're dealing with an issue regarding an employee or a very sensitive matter, that person needs to have absolute certainty that we very much protect and we take very seriously the responsibility of of their personal information, their personal circumstances in these discussions. And I personally believe, there's no question in my mind personally, that the vice mayor did not intend to violate any policy in this. I believe that. I also understand the concerns. In my vocation, I hold several positions in addition to being a sworn chaplain for our police department. I have had many years of training set in many classes, and in addition to what the League of Cities and the state requires us to do. Integrity and privacy is is the foundation as a counselor that I live in. That's my glass house. I am totally and completely ineffective if I am not able to be absolutely across the board in all circumstances able to align myself with confidentiality. I deal with it on a daily basis. Confidentiality is the cornerstone of a closed session. And it has to remain so. I do not believe that our vice mayor did something intentional whatsoever. I do believe hindsight being 20/20, if this conversation and this circumstance rose and he had a chance to do something differently, and of course, he's able to speak on it, I believe that personally, he would probably do something different. But I don't believe that not addressing this is something that we can, in good conscience, do. We can't not address our expectations and our responsibilities for closed session events. And so, you know, I know we're still having the discussion, but I just wanted it to be very clear that as a whole, this isn't something that that is vindictive or mean spirited or or any of that. This is something that I was a part of the subcommittee years ago that helped work with our legal counsel to craft what was in and is in place now, and it took a long time because of how important it is and how I expect and want every single council member to be protected by exactly the same depth of protection regardless of who they are. I want our ordinances to protect us all equally and hold us all equally accountable. And so that is very important to this process. Councilmember Rary?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to sanction the vice mayor for disclosing confidential information to a third party.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Oh, yeah, sir.
Mayor Bryant?
I believe sanction is in the process. I believe admonition is because it would more greatly apply to all of us, so I'm a no on this.
Motion carries with three council members in favor, Vice Mayor Rodriguez abstained, and Mayor Bryant with a no vote.
Doesn't abstention, when you can vote, come to a yes vote?
Then I'd like to say no.
Motion carries with 3-3-2.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I have a break?
Yes, yes, we can. We will be back at 9:45 if the council is in support. It looks like they are. We'll be back at 9:45. Okay, this time we will reconvene, council meeting, and move into request for future agenda items. And is there anyone that has a new future agenda item request at this time?
Did we skip? No. Okay, in that case, I do.
Okay.
Sorry, a little unsettled still. I would like to request, I mentioned earlier that I had a discussion with Mickey Saboda today about the Chromium 6 question that's kind of been on people's minds. And I think his explanation that he shared with me was really valuable, but in trying And I think his, his explanation that he shared with me was, was really valuable, but in trying to, um. Like think about sharing it as a, as an informational, I don't think I could have given it the, the true attention and, and. Basically represented his level of expertise on this issue. So I would really. Like for, um, staff, uh, Mickey, if possible, to give an overview of the chromium six water question that's been kind of. Floating around, um, where we are when it comes to state mandates, where we are when, um, where we land. As a city, um, what implications are, what, what the causes of our levels are, what we would have to do to change those levels. Um, I, I would like just a, a very broad overview of all of those issues. Um, I don't. What I really want is to just have a, a staff report and a presentation. Um, whatever is easiest to do that with, obviously it's not urgent because I believe the state hasn't even. Um, officially designated what their maximum level of parts per billion is right now. Um, so I, I would say next year is fine. If, you know, it doesn't need to be rushed in any way. Uh, but I do think that there's enough concern for the public because of everything, all the back and forth and, and. Information flying around. I think the public, um, deserves to understand a little bit more about this issue. Um, I have a second one too, but I will wait for council member Mendoza.
Well, no, um, I know it takes one person to ask for it or two people to put it on the agenda. Um, I would back you on putting that on the agenda, but actually. I would actually ask for it sooner because there, we do, we are getting so many calls on it. Like, I don't know. I, if we could put it on agenda, just a quick ten minute update, I think. Mickey, you said Mickey gave you one. Can you just do that to the public? Quick ten minutes? End of story. Let's stop any kind of like, are we being harmed? Are we not being harmed? Because we're all getting a lot of calls about it and. We could squash, squash that workload if we, you know, the sooner we have the presentation. So can we put it on the next agenda, Tim?
No, but we can bring it back first of the year.
First of the year. Do we have a lot coming on the next agenda?
We're, we'll bring it back the first of the year.
Okay, I guess my, my understanding is if two people ask for it, it comes on the next agenda, but you're saying it can't. So why is that?
We have the agendas planned already for December thirteenth and we can have a fuller presentation on chromium six the first of the year.
So is this a process change?
It's not.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused because you had told me that if two people wanted something on the next agenda. Two people asked for it and you're saying no.
So council member Meyer has requested a future agenda item request. Per the policy on the next agenda. You direct us to come back to spend staff time and resources to come back and so we come back in the first of the year.
Okay. That's fine.
Um, my second item is not really a policy as much as a request. There was a caller in the beginning that talked about. Accessibility of council member email addresses on the website. And I think. I, I feel strongly that we should actually have a listing of our email addresses on, um, not just the form. Where there's a limited amount of characters, but an actual listing of each email address for each council member on the website. Thanks.
Yes, so that doesn't need to be a future gen item, but we can look into restoring what was there previously. We had some issues with spamming. But we can restore that so you can, we can fix that.
Thank you.
Hey, if there are no further new future agenda items, we will move into item E two.
Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. I just want to be clear that on D two. Uh, there was a motion taken, um, that passed. And I just want the record to be clear. Is, is that the, uh, desired result that the council was seeking or? Is there a resolution going to be brought, uh, to that effect for the thirteenth? I just think that needs to be clear on the record.
Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, council approved of the, um. Sanction of Vice Mayor Rodriguez in a vote of three to two. And.
Does it require a resolution?
I, I, I don't believe it. I don't believe it does. I mean, typically you do.
It does. So the policy calls out that if you decide on a sanction tonight. On the very next meeting to have a resolution with those findings. So that will be on the December thirteenth agenda.
Mr. Davis, does that, uh, satisfy your question?
So Tim, what does that actually mean? Just so I could understand. I mean, what is it?
Just bear with me, bear with me one second.
What about Tim Ogden? What did you mean by that then? So at the next meeting, so what happened tonight? Did it get approved? I mean, move forward or does it still need to get approved and move forward at the next meeting? Tim Ogden?
Yes, let me pull up the policy and I can show it to the council. Just one sec.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the policy requires that. I think it could be done as a minute action. Um, and if, if it is going to be brought as a second matter, then certainly the vice mayor has the right to respond. Um, if it's going to be done tonight as a minute action, then I think he's entitled. Um, to say whatever he wants to say on the record in response to it. So that's why I'm just trying to get clarity. Are we resolving this all tonight? So I think the vice mayor can say what he wants to say in relationship to it. If the vote isn't.
Tim, so Tim, just really quick, Tim.
Yep.
What policy did I break or were we at with that in regards to?
I think the motion, I think the motion was specific related to the disclosure of confidential information. Um, that, that I think was the motion.
So what transpires? What, what does that mean and what does that look like?
Well, I mean, it, it means that to the extent that you're filling out a personnel evaluation. Which is a confidential document and that was disclosed to a third party. That's, that is the violation. Uh, that there, that occurred. And all I'm trying to get clarity on is, is this, is this a minute motion? And then you have the right to respond on the record to it tonight. If, if the issue is to bring it as a resolution, that will come back. Uh, on the thirteenth and then you can respond to it at that time. Um. That's what I'm trying to, uh, get clear.
Okay, so this is what the policy says that if the city council has decided on an admonition or sanction. It says right here. In the staff report. So should the council decide to issue an admonition or sanction, a resolution memorializing the action may be prepared for the next meeting, which is December thirteen, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's permissive. That's, yeah, I don't want to argue with you, but that's permissive. That is something that the council could do. It isn't something that they're required to.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I just trying to get clarity on that so that we're clear. Uh, for the next meeting, if this is going to trail or if we're just dealing with it all right now.
Can we deal with it all just tonight? Is that okay if the rest?
That's, I think that's permissible. The policy doesn't require a resolution for a sanction. Uh, censor is a different issue. I don't even want to go there, but. It sounded to me like that's what, what in that, in, in fact, you were all doing. And I was remiss in not saying, as a result of that action, the vice mayor gets to put his. Response to that on the record. And I just wanted to make sure that. If indeed that's what the council did, that the vice mayor gets the opportunity to say what he wants to say in response to it. And then you can move on with your meeting, uh, future meetings.
Um, I, I think it was clear that, um. The, the sanction, uh, was, was approved by the majority of council. And, um, I, I agree with council member Mendoza. I'd like to take care of it tonight. Which I suppose the next steps is, uh, Vice Mayor, you are now, uh, you have the, the floor to respond. To sanction, uh. At this time.
Yeah, you don't even. Obviously I haven't prepared anything to respond, right? Uh. Uh, let me be tasteful and respectful and, and, um, just, um, okay. Just want to make it clear that, um, I didn't discuss anything that was shared in closed session. I did share. The eval- evaluation materials, um, to my wife. So that she could grab my thoughts and put them on, um, the evaluation papers so that I could really be able to put my thoughts. And, um. And in doing that, um. I just wanted to make sure that I was, you know, doing my, my best in that evaluation. And saying that, I know it's, um. Obviously we've heard different reasons why how things could have been handled. Um, but I felt at that time that I made the right decision. And, um, yeah, it's just something I, you know, I've struggled with in regards to expressing myself. You know, in writing kind of a thing, but, um. Yeah, I just want to make it very clear that not once have I've ever shared or discussed. Any closed sessions with anybody. Uh, the only thing, the allegations and that I did do was share it with my wife in regards to the evaluation and her. Putting my thoughts on paper. Other than that, nothing at no point has ever been shared in regards to, uh, closed sessions. I've been on not only the city council, been on school boards, and I've never. Have ever had to experience what I experienced, um, to be honest with you, not even just this situation for the last month and a half, two months of, um. Yeah, it's pretty funny, but okay, um, that's all I have, Mary. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
I'm sorry, I'm talking and I'm, I'm muted. Mr. Davis, does that, uh, satisfy the process?
I, I think so, that, uh, that took care of it and, uh. Just wanted to make sure we are all clear on, um. What we were handling tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for, for all of your assistance in this.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
And thank you, council. Um, at this time, we will move into item E two point one. Uh, it is a future agenda item request from council member Mendoza related to Amber Lane Apartments and council member Mendoza.
Yeah, um, I brought this up because, um, in January. Of twenty-one, I called for review Amber Lane because there had been a ton of changes, um, at planning commission on the architecture that I felt. Were not standard to our Brentwood guidelines and our design guidelines. So I called it for review. Um, they need a little bit more time. I was going to be out of town. So then, um. I got an email from, I think it was either Damian or Tim, I can't remember right now, saying that. Teakin, the people who, the developers for Amber Lane were actually saying, forget it. We don't want to do any of the changes that we asked for. We're going to stick to the original. So then I, they asked me to rescind it. So it never came to us. I rescinded. And then, um. In April, a resident reached out to, um. To staff and they got an e- because they had concerns about what they were seeing and they were told, no, no changes have happened. Um, then, um. I think it was July, I emailed Tim and said, hey, what are the changes happening? And. I think Tim's response was like, no, there's no changes happening. Um, there's nothing happening. And I was like, oh, okay. And, um. You know, and I said, I think I even asked for like the list if we were doing changes or something along those lines. And then in November second, I drove by and it didn't look like the schematic. So, um. I stopped by and I looked at it and I asked for someone to tell me what changes had occurred and, um. I hadn't heard and I, I, I'm, I haven't gone and answer a list of architectural changes that have happened. So. I don't, it, it's not like I brought it up off the bat. I've been asking for this. Kind of information since July and I haven't gotten an answer. I didn't want to bring up an agenda item. I'm bringing up an agenda item because all I want is a list and like what got changed and I'm not getting that list. Um. So now I brought it up as an agenda item. I've continued to ask, um. I still haven't gotten a list, which I would think that like our planning department would have a list of. This is the changes that happen on this project. Like I think, I mean. I would think that would be processed, but maybe it's not. So at this point, the only reason it's here and the only reason I'm frustrated is because. I'm asking for information and we're saying we're, you know, and not only me, but like there's been residents that have brought it up. And we're saying we're a city of transparency and we're going to give information. And for some reason on this project. We're not getting it. And even when I asked, like. I feel like I had a kind of Nancy Drew it because I found out that there was a design review meeting. Where they made two changes and it's, I don't even know why I couldn't be told about those two changes. So all I really want is I want to know what changes were made and what was the rationale for them because. Um. If I'm asked by a resident, I should be able to answer. If I'm concerned about something, I should be able to review it. And it feels like right now I'm just not. Being told what's going on unless there's something else going on. So that's, I just want a list of the changes.
Well, if I could just make a few clarifying comments. In July. And I have the email. You asked to make sure that we had somebody inspect it to make sure that it's being built according to what's approved. Once, uh, councils or planning commissions approve an architectural design plan. That then gets translated into construction documents. They're typically three, four hundred pages, have all the technical details, mechanical plumbing, et cetera. And sometimes there are some changes. Staff almost always asks for. Authority in the approving documents that we have authority to review those documents. And ensure that it's substantially conforming with what was approved. And in the case of the balconies, there was a, a slight change that staff felt was appropriate. Um, the design review that you mentioned, the planning commission, that occurred well before the planning commission actually approved it in early twenty twenty. No additional changes have occurred since twenty twenty. Other than the ones that you said were changed and then rescinded back. And so final changes were done in January twenty twenty. The planning documents that we now inspect, the inspectors go out on the site and check are looking at the construction documents that the building permit has now authorized and approved. And that's a little bit of a snippet. I've invited Alexis to see if there's any clarifying comments that might be helpful to the council at this point, but. The building permit has been approved and they are in compliance with the building permit on the balconies about what's been approved. There is a secondary issue that's not part of your agenda request per se. That staff has not authorized and is going back to the planning commission December sixth to reconsider something along the roof line. So there is some issues that do pop up where staff does not have the comfort level to say that's substantially conforming. Uh, when it doesn't, we bring it back to the planning commissioner, the city council for consideration at that point. Um, I'm not sure what a future agenda would look like if we brought this back, honestly, because they do have an approved building permit.
But there was a design review meeting December ninth, twenty twenty-one for garage doors and color of the, of the thing. So. I guess I don't understand.
All of that got undone when the call for order was rescinded and then when they went back to the original approvals. So those.
My call for order was in April. They came April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December for changes after that. December twenty twenty-one. So that was after we had seen it.
Right. And then those terms got rescinded and went back to the original approval.
No, it rescinded first, then you had a design review. Twenty twenty-one, rescind. I, I, I guess at the end, all I want is a list of the changes.
Well, I just want to.
I want to understand when I am on council approving something, what are the possible changes that can happen?
And that's the next agenda item. So on this one here, Alexis can clarify if I've got a date misunderstood. So Alexis, can you clarify if we have the facts out here?
Sure. The garage doors was, um, after during the building permit plan check, they asked for a change. Um, so council member, you are correct that that was after the approval. It was a subcommittee of planning commission and that's how that was addressed. And you got that information from staff, I believe.
No, I did not get it from staff. I had to go around.
Sent you.
No, Eric sent it after I sent an email like it's come to my attention. There was a design review meeting.
Right, and we provided it. I had. So council, yes, so council member does, my understanding of your request earlier this summer was to make sure that we were following the approved plans. Um, and that's what we did at that time. And then, um, there is no list. So we offered to go through the plans in person. Because it's so complicated. There's three or four hundred pages. It's not scanned. It's a hard copy. So in lieu of that, we have in this agenda item request, since that meeting never happened. If council wants to authorize staff to spend time on this, we would have to create that list, which we can do, but it will take some time. The plan check was. Over a year ago. It's not a lengthy list, but it is complex. But we're talking about construction drawings for nine buildings. Um, and how this process works is there's minor changes that can happen during plan check. That is part of the substantial conformance that all the city departments work under when they're doing plan plan reviews. So I'm happy if council wants to have more information about how that plan check process works in all our departments or mine. I it it full disclosure, transparency, I'm happy to go through that because that's not an aspect. Of the process that decision makers see, right? It's something we do at staff level. It's ministerial. And you know, maybe it would benefit the public to realize how all of that works. And if we're in person. I can bring a whole plan set and show everybody what we go through. It's a lot. And so that's why that list doesn't necessarily exist because in our mind and reasonable people can disagree. The changes are minor. The changes that are significant, we are bringing back to planning commission and we hope to do that December sixth. We're still working with the applicant on all that information. So we do have some discretion and we used it. And like I said, reasonable people can disagree. On whether that discretion is appropriate, and that's probably the next item on your future agenda requests. Um, but the building permits have been issued for this project, so I'm not sure how beneficial a specific conversation is versus. A general, but if you want us to give you a list of the changes that happen, we can put that together if council so wishes.
I think, I think. Because it's not just us, right? It's the public also. The public sees this because they're the ones who originally sent me pictures like this doesn't look right. And. So I think it'd be good to show the public why we make changes and why sometimes they're necessary. Because if not, it it just feels like there's stuff going on, right? So.
And I'm, yeah.
And I get that there's not. There's rationale for it. But when we see changes and no one can tell us. Then it just feels we, it's just, it's hard for us to speak to the public.
I I don't know that that's fair, that no one can tell you. I think it's just there are certain mechanisms that we can respond to requests for information. And something like the list that you're requesting just doesn't exist. So if I had it, I would have provided it to all of you before this meeting, right? So it's something we just have to spend time on. And if council wants us to do that, we can do that. And I'm happy to have an informational session on how the plan check process work because it is an ass, a very important aspect of our job that the public doesn't see. Earlier tonight, you voted on the resolution for the building code. You saw how complex and how many chapters of that there are. I'm happy to do a plan check one O one for council, planning commission, and the public just to see what happens after approval. Because you're right, that is an important part of the process that is, it's not hidden. It's just not part of the public hearing process, right? It's something that is ministerial and done at staff level. So it it pains me to think that people are thinking. Um, that there's something untoward going on in our department just by doing our jobs, the way that they're meant to be done. And I would love to address that in a public forum so the public can see that that's not the case. That that really pains me.
I don't think it was, it's not you. It's that we've sent, I've sent emails to Tim and I don't get like responses, right? Like, I mean, the email started back in. April to, you know, from a resident. So that's, that's what I think. I I hope you understand. It's not you. It's been a culmination of an ask, and ask, and ask, and ask. And then it's like, okay, fine. Like, okay, I'm going to bring it to council because I'm not getting. A response.
So it can't, I can't, I was copied on some of those emails and those responses and I probably would not have handled them much differently. So I can't really, I don't want to get into a necessary argument about that, but I'm happy to help. I'm always available. I have email. I have a phone if there are questions. Anytime I can be reached. I don't want things to escalate to this point as you are frustrated with this. So am I. I would like to be able to answer questions the minute they come up because that's my job. So if.
So maybe a workshop and we can use this as an example. And any public person or any council, like, we don't all have to be there, right? It could be just a workshop. Where um, and it might even be good for new council people to come and see how we do it, right? So I'll learn, the public can choose to learn if they want. And we do have a lot of people that are really involved in like all the architecture. And we can go through this as an example and why. You know, something might be a minor change. It's no longer available, so we have to change the product. Or, you know, there's new code, so we have to update that. So I think that that would be beneficial for all of us. And then in the future, you know, I can talk to Tim about being able to reach out directly to you and ask you questions and. You know, not feel like I'm stepping on any toes.
The um, if that's council's wish, by all means, I'm happy to do that anytime. That's not necessarily, I I think how this agenda item request was crafted. But if that is council's desire, I'm. I will do, I always do how, whatever I'm directed by council, but I don't.
That's kind of what I wanted. I just wanted a list in the rationale. So I think a workshop with the list in the rationale, if everyone else is, if, you know, the majority of the council is okay with it. I mean, again, I don't think it's something everyone has to come to, but. I think um. I think if we're going to do it, let's do it once for everyone, the public and um and myself and anyone else who'd like to partake.
And and if I could clarify, you know, it it's not just our department that does this. Our department has the benefit of plan checking things that are vertical. Right? Um, that people can see when they drive by, but there's substantial conformance. There are plan checks that happen. For example, the Sand Creek Sports Complex someday will have a plan check associated with it. Sand Creek Road has a plan check associated with it. So if you just want to focus on community development, we can do that. But this is something that all of our departments pretty much suffer, maybe plan develop. I mean, PD and HR do, right? We do plan checks as part of our job regularly and we have discretion and we make um. Judgment calls every day on substantial conformance. It's something that our conditions of approval and our code allows us to do. So if you just want to focus on community development, that's fine, but I'm more than happy to share the wealth and the fun with other departments as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can start with your department and then see how it goes, get some best practices and then. You know, we could, I mean, I don't know, I like learning about everything you guys are doing, but I think it's also important for the um residents and I think it'd be good to do it in a public setting. I mean, but that's all.
Yeah, and we'll have the the benefit of when we do come back with this to be in person and we can show people how significant these construction documents are and how complex and technical they are. And I think that might helpful to understand why you hire these experts to review everything in in detail.
Okay, um, in order to maintain the uh. Integrity of the process here uh. According to our agenda. Uh, this time I'm going to open public comments and then we will come back for for council discussion. So at this time I'm opening public comments. Uh, Margaret.
I received zero written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and mute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have some hands raised, so I will go ahead and share the timer screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a sham. This is really, really, really simple. All right. Um, I'm not going to speak for council member Mendoza. But it was my understanding the way she asked it, there were forty five changes. That Amber tried to get away with. And they all did the little shenanigans, keeping it under ninety nine thousand dollars so they can slip under. And they were caught. Planning caught it. They spent hours going through line by line, saying what they'll prove what they want. Then they went to council. They did a couple of more things. That is what was approved. So all this messy mosh. About, oh, we don't have a list. It's like, yes, you do. The fence is a prime example. There should have been no change. They wanted to change it. We turned them down. They agreed. They signed the contract. Then somebody came to you guys and said, we don't want to do it. We want this. This is real simple. And if you're upset because someone's calling you on your job, well, you know what? We are upset. Now I made a video about this and I will hold the quarter million dollar man to this completely. Because he should have known. The whole we were discreet about it. You guys were involved in the entire process. You should have known that there was going to be some hot button items. I can't believe that no one. On this call didn't think there were going to be hot button items. And sure enough, what are you caught on? You're caught on the things we did not want. They slipped them in anyway. What is the use of going through this process? And somebody could just call and say, oh, hey, you know? And then you want to hide it in verbiage and you want to do misdirects. No, no, no. Now, you, uh, why you need to spend more time? That part I totally don't understand because as I said, there's a list. I can go through my files. I could email it to you tomorrow. If you need a list, there is, you don't need to make up something. You have specific changes that you approved. And the question becomes why? And not this, we felt like it, or you gave us the discretion. No, that's not good enough. Because you're giving us sub quality work. Take that as it is. You are providing sub quality work. And I'll see you on the next one.
The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Um, hi, yeah, I um, I was in in that meeting where we went through. Not we, not me, because I was listening. Uh, but Karen, council member Rary, council member Meyer, and council member Mendoza, we went through. Um, an excruciating process of sightlines, windows, materials for the roof. The entrance, the banister, um. And I can't remember the name of the material, but it it had a really funny name for the roofing. Shingles. And I was like, I didn't know that was the name of that. Um, and also the parking lot and the covered parking. And uh, the reason why. When I drove by and I was like, wow, this doesn't look, it wa- I didn't call. Councilmember Mendoza, but I was like, this is really strange. This doesn't look like the drawings to me. I understand there are changes. But what um, city staff has to understand is that builders normally, they don't ask for permission. They just make the changes and then they say, oh, oops, well, we changed the plumbing, but the drywall is already up. So it's too expensive to go back and fix it. And then they beg for forgiveness and then they don't fix anything, which is why so many. Builders get sued so often for shoddy materials because they tend to do this. And I did ask if we were going to have, how we were going to hold the builder to the materials and to the design. And Tim did promise me that we were going to have frequent visits from um. People who check the plans against what is being built. So um, I I would like to know if that happened with this build. This is in my neighborhood. Um, and that is why people express concern. I think the process may be complicated and I agree, we don't have visibility to that and having visibility to it would be really helpful. But also because we know how builders work and they're not the most honest people on this planet and they do tend to make changes. After everything's been agreed upon to maximize their profits, period. So. That's uh, that's my two cents, not discounted. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um. Yeah, I, so I remember that night that that we came in and we we saw the the city council make a lot of changes. And I was also um. Involved in social media activities beforehand. Um, to show people changes that the planning commission had approved and everybody was like, oh, no, no, that's awful. I mean. There was nobody that said, oh, that looks great. You know, people were really upset with the changes that had been made at the time. And so. We came and. The city council made changes to improve greatly the appearance of the thing. Um, and now apparently some changes have been made again after city council. Um, that are not so great and. And look, um. I I think that the very least that that we can get here is some explanation of the process. I mean, we we come down here. We come honestly, earnestly, and we expect that that we can make a difference in our city. We want Brentwood to be the jewel of East County. We really do. We want, we want things to look nice here. And um, I don't think anybody has anything to apologize for that. I think it's a. It's natural, you know, our home values, most of us, our homes are our biggest investment. Um, and living in a nice city is better for us financially, um. As well as spiritually and emotionally. I mean, you don't want to live in a in a in a town that isn't. As nice as it can be and nobody's, nobody's asking for the Taj Mahal here. We just wanted some common sense changes. And and so what does constitute acceptable or not acceptable is a fair question to ask. And um. Even tonight, I'm not really hearing a solid recognition of that um. From from staff. And so. I I really hope that the staff will sit down and and look at this and say, okay, what did we approve? What did people really want? From our town. We are experts, but we should be delivering. What people want for our town and what people want is for Brentwood to be a nice town. We won't, we don't want shoddy apartments. We want nice apartments. When nobody's saying, hey, don't, well, people are saying, don't build apartments. But we're the reasonable ones. We're saying, okay, we got to have apartments. Um. But we don't have to have them. Ugly apartments. We don't have to have them substandard. We just want the the same nice quality standards that have been applied so far. We want our town to continue to be what it is, which is the jewel of East County. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comments. Uh, moving to council discussion, Councilmember Rary.
Yes, um. I I do recall coming to the to the city council. I I I did just pull up the um. The summary and and minutes for that meeting and other than saying who spoke. On the applicants and and on the uh. Somebody else and and. Whoever spoke is, and and it just gave a brief uh. A summary of what they said. But it didn't say um, anything on there other than. We approved the resolution. So I'm not sure what additional things were were that we added. Um, without actually going through the video and um, unfortunately, I've been doing. Twelve to eighteen hour days, getting my house ready to put on the market. So I, I, I didn't have time to to get to, to go through the video on it. So if I I would like to see what what we had specifically requested and whether or not. Um. Those changes have been made. It would be great to um. It would be great to also have the uh. Uh, plan check one O one class. Um, I I think it'd be very informative. For especially for the new council coming on and um, for uh, planning commissioners because. You will be um, appointing planning commissioners soon too. So um, that uh, that would be a wonderful thing for them to see. Um. So I I I. Support spending staff time and money on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Um. Alexa, Alexis, can you clarify if if any of the changes were because of building codes?
Um, well. I've only been discussing this with planning, so there may have been changes that were made through the plan check process and building that I haven't discussed. So again. This is nine buildings. This is a several hundred page plan set. So it's conceivable that there were some changes made as a result to building code. Whether or not those affected aesthetics, likely not. Those types of changes usually don't. So what folks are driving by and seeing is the exterior, right? The facade. Typically, those building code changes, unless, for example, balconies do have a weight. Um, and an impact requirement. So if they propose a material that doesn't meet the code requirement for impact, let's say. That might have to change. That type of thing could affect the aesthetics, right? Um, but yes, there may have been building code changes, ma- changes made as a result of the building code. Those aren't likely to have affected the aesthetics. But again, that's part of the research and all the package I would put together for council, if council directed us to spend more time on this because. This is quite a big project. This is one of the biggest in the city, nine buildings. this is quite a big project. This is one of the biggest in the city, nine buildings, two hundred and eighty-eight units. There would be a lot to unpack there and provide to council on in terms of changes.
Okay.
Now, if council just wants to focus on aesthetic changes, we can certainly do that because I think those are probably the ones most relevant for the community.
Yeah, I mean, I would I would agree with, I think it's more aesthetic that people are concerned about. I just wasn't, wasn't clear on whether building code could impact aesthetics.
It can, yeah, on lots of projects it can. For example, architects, maybe not the best on interpreting building codes and structural uh, codes. So they can propose materials that once a structural engineer or um, they start putting it in building plans, just cannot be supported and they might, you know, propose a swap out if that happened. Depending on whether it's visible or how significant it is, I might have to go back to planning commissioner council. Um, or if it's a like-for-like, it's a similar material but lighter weight, then that probably wouldn't have to go back, you know, so this is all the things I'm happy to discuss and explain. It's, you know, plan checking is really detailed and really lengthy and complex. I'm not being dismissive of people's concerns by any means, but it is something that is other, without a visual and without us putting all this package together, it's really, I can't meaningfully address it tonight.
Yeah, and I I I was one who very definitely could not come to city count, to city chamber, excuse me, city offices to look at all of that with my full-time job. I just wasn't able to do it. But more important to me um, is the idea of um I mean, I think the list is important. What I don't necessarily need to know is the chain of command part of it. I think it's more important for us to understand the plan check as it impacts the process and and really to have an understanding of what it, what level of change would require coming back. Um, so I think I, the list, clearly, this this council is very concerned about about the aesthetics. The public is very concerned about that. We want a quality product. So I think it's it's um, reasonable to look into that. But I, again, I think more important than the chain of command part of it, I think is just really understanding the plan check and how the process works and what would um, justify needing to go back to council or planning. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rary.
And and I don't know if I I was clear on it. I don't want all the changes that took place, just just the ones that we specifically called out um or that planning um, called out and were forwarded to us because planning had um, had called those out and 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 the ones that we called out. Sorry, I'm I'm kind of kind of at the end of my ropes today, so um.
I think I understand. We can certainly provide the resolutions that were adopted for the project. You know, we do, like you said, we have action minutes, not necessarily detailed minutes, but we can summarize the videos of those meetings for the public's benefit and the future council who um, may be hearing this and weren't um, around at that time. So we can certainly put all that information together in a packet, if that's helpful, and just focus on the aesthetics, as you said.
Should we do it in a packet or should we do it like in a little, like, I I, it's almost like a little workshop? You know, where we can ask you questions and like the public can ask you questions.
Like, could you repeat the first part of the question? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Um, I don't know if it's a packet or just we could do like a workshop or like you're teaching us like how you do your, you know, how you do that part of your job.
That's, yeah, that's up to the council for sure.
Yeah, um, because sometimes if you just send a packet, we'll we'll have questions back and forth kind of thing. And it's just, it might be easier just to sit down and ask you the questions and just work through it and see what you're seeing at the same time. Um. So does that end up then saving the the staff time and effort of doing an actual agenda report?
Yeah.
More workshop focused? Yeah, and I think that would take care of what was approved, like by, like, you know, your, the different items you changed. And then um what was built? So what it was approved, what what did you change? What did it look like? And what was the justification? Like, why would we change X to Z? And um, and I think that would answer this and not have to come back as a meeting, but just I would think like, you know, just a workshop if everyone is okay with that. And if the public wants, I mean, the public says they really care about this stuff, so we're giving them an opportunity to be involved and learn how this is done and why there would be changes.
Uh, I I would completely agree. I I think that a workshop would be an ideal opportunity, not just for council, but for the community also. Um, I I have gone over uh, a lot of these plans over the years. I I know Land Use Development Committee does that. Um, Councilmember Mendoza, I believe you are on the current one. Uh, there, there's just so much information uh, from big items to small items that this process as complicated as it is to make sure we do everything that's required at every level. Uh, it it's going to take, in my opinion, more than uh more than a a a period of time on a council meeting. I'd love to get the experts, Alexis uh, in in the industry. I've had other people call me from outside of the city that uh, really are neutral uh, in in who they are, have called me expressing uh, their appreciation of of her expertise. And so it would be great to have the experts that we have come in and and explain to me and others the how and why and how how you make the sausage, right? I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes into it. I would find it very helpful. So I I agree with Councilmember Mendoza totally.
So can I make a motion that we direct staff to spend time and resources uh, developing a workshop where we educate both the council and the public? Um, using Amber Lane as an example on um, what changes were approved, what got built and what was the justification for them as a way to educate us all?
May I ask for a quick clarification on that? The council had mentioned the importance of planning commissioners having access to this information as well. And one of you mentioned that new planning commissioners will be appointed in the spring. Were you hoping to time this such that the new planning commissioners would have the opportunity to attend it? Or were you thinking it would come before you more quickly? Or ju- I'm trying to get a sense of when this would come back.
I I'd love it fast, but if, we should probably wait for the new planning commissioners.
Okay, that helps me with my notes. Thank you.
I mean, unless unless anyone else has an objection to that.
I I'm sure staff would like the reprieve from not having that on top of getting the housing development. Um, our our housing element back from HCD, so.
Okay.
One, one little, one little aside to add to this, the council had previously requested that we bring in the Institute of Local Governments to come and do a training orientation to new council and new planning commissioners and have a joint session between council and planning commissioners to make sure that the expectations and vision and goals and understanding roles, et cetera, are all clearly understood. So we've actually have a proposal in our hands to bring the Institute of Local Governments to come provide that training in January, February. So that that is also in in process of coming forward. And we can maybe integrate that into this to have a third party kind of walk you through some of those things as well as our our experts that we have on hand, including I think we've got Alexis, what, two consulting firms that actually help us with the plan checks. So there's a lot of moving parts.
On the building side, yes.
Building side, correct. So a lot of moving parts, a lot of people touching these things. And when you really get to see the four, five hundred pages of construction documents, I think you'll get a better grasp of how how significant the review is and how many different moving parts are involved.
Okay.
If if you, if you go into City Hall, there's the rolling rolling um, file cabinet that you can actually, you know, spin the thing and it rolls and you see all these huge rolls of planning, the planning documents.
And if I could add just one point for the public and the benefit of this workshop, going forward, all of our plans will be submitted electronically. Um, and we will be doing plan checks electronically. So um, this one we can do because we do have hard copies of these plans because, you know, this was an older project. But going forward, um, this is something that would all be on a screen and a monitor and a little different than what we're probably going to do early next year. But um, we can certainly.
But didn't the there, the new law come out that uh, proprietary um, designs may not be on there?
They're not published. We still get them submitted electronically and do our work, but we are not, you know, we cannot post them on the web for other people to look at. We couldn't do that anyway because the file sizes are too big. But
Yeah.
Um, um, there are, there are some recent changes to state law in terms of how we do plan checks that limit our timeframe and um would make it a violation of the Housing Accountability Act if we don't meet these timeframes on plan checks that I would love to discuss in this workshop as well because um, there are some constraints that we're going to be under starting in January um, and how we how fast we have to do these residential plan checks.
Just lovely.
More reason for local control, just a plug. So I I have the motion out there.
We have a first and a second. Tim, did you have something you'd like to add or question?
Nope. And this, this isn't confused about the motion is, but it sounds like a workshop early next year. Clarifying what was approved. What is currently built and justifications for any changes and how that process works. And we want to flag for you all the four hundred pages to kind of show you what the the volume and depth of these these construction documents look like as well. And that'll be open to the public as well as as the uh, council and planning commissioners, et cetera. Does that sound right? Okay.
We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries, five oh.
Okay, we'll move into item E two point two.
So this one, I think I want to wait for the workshop. And then once we walk through it, we can say, okay, does this make sense? Or do we as a council feel like these things are significant enough, they should come back to planning or to council? But so this one I'm going to hold off on until we have our workshop, if that's okay with everyone.
And one suggestion is it fits right into what this workshop would be covering about conditions of approval and and how that review process internally works as well. So we could certainly work it into that workshop if that's helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Then we will remove that from this item from this agenda?
Um, maybe just for a clean record, just maybe Katie, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Mister Mayor, if I can clarify with Councilmember Mendoza, when the city clerk prepares the summary of actions for this evening, um, I imagine she would indicate that this item E two point two had been withdrawn at this time. Is that a fair clarification for the record?
That is a fair clarification.
Withdrawn or or continued?
Well, let me withdraw it. And if I feel like after the workshop I need it, then I'll bring it back. Because if not, it's just hanging out there. So if we go to the workshop and we're like, we're good to go, then I won't bring it back.
Okay, so you formally withdraw it, but staff has direction, we'll probably include it in the workshop so you have that context as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, if all of those questions are asked and answered, just want to take a quick moment. Uh, since this, if all things go to plan, is our final only Zoom uh, remote council meeting. And I just want to say how much I appreciate uh, our council members and and our staff in in having to deal with this situation, which is far from ideal, but um just, just the level of care and as as impossible as it may have seemed at first, we were able to accomplish things in a very difficult environment. And I just want to let you know from from the bottom of my heart how much I appreciate your level of care and uh prof- professional responsibility that you've taken in this. It would have been very easy to just let our frustrations cause us to do poor work. I don't believe we have. And I just want to thank you all very much uh, for enduring this that none of us could have ever imagined uh, two years ago. So thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it.
So, and and before, before we do uh, adjourn, um, it was brought to my attention that um, I I was harrying a um, our our human uh, resource director, uh, Dakari Bishers at the, at the last meeting. While I haven't had time to look it over, it, a- as I mentioned earlier, I I've been putting in twelve to eighteen hour days trying to get the house ready. Um, it was no different the day of the that meeting and uh, with my frustration um, as not feeling like I was I was getting my point across. I, it was never my intent during I'm Sakari, and I apologize to her for um, and and I wanted, I wanted to do this publicly. Um, I I wanted to apologize to her publicly and um, that it was never my intent uh to do so. And and I'm sorry if if I made you feel that way. And uh.
Well, well.
Yeah, and like, piggybacking on that, I think, yeah, we both got the same message and it wasn't me with staff. That wasn't why I was so upset about this. It was it was other stuff, but it wasn't staff. And um, I talked to Damian about that, but just so staff knows, I wasn't talking about staff. So, same thing.
Well, thank you. And with that, um, I would like to uh, adjourn in honor of our veterans, their families uh, and the sacrifices that they have all made uh, in in keeping us uh, the land of the free and home brave and it and the the greatest political process for the voice of every single individual. And so if we could do that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
First and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.